Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. Could all please rise? Pastor Russ Nguyen with the Springs Church is here this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you Mayor. Let us pray together, please. Father, we ask your blessings to be on our gathering this evening. We thank you for the men and women who serve on this council. We thank you for their time, their energy, their gifting this to make this city such an incredible place. And Lord, we pray that you would grant tonight your wisdom, your guidance as they deal with the agenda before them. And Lord, we pray for all the families that are still kind of dispersed and they're picking their lives up because of the flood and Irma. We pray your grace, your mercy upon them. We give all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Councilman Schlagewitt, you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
It'll be an honor, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba, here. Councilman Dewitt.
Here.
Councilman Sacta.
Here.
Mayor Simmons.
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Councilman Forbes.
Here.
Well, good evening, everybody. If there's -- we're going to go to public comment right now if there's on-agenda items, if there's members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward now.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm going to throw this under stormwater. Last Sunday, I found out that the Presbyterian Church has -- as of last Friday, people donated $110,000 to go to Love Inc., to be distributed by Love Inc., and that was last Friday. I'm sure there's more now. So I'll have to give you the phone number. You can call 24 hours a day. If they're not there, they tell you where to go. But it's for any need. It's 23 churches between San Carlos Park and North Naples that work together to coordinate our efforts to help people in Benita Springs and elsewhere. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Other members of the public? Good evening, Linda.
Good evening. My name is Linda Schwartz, and I've been a full-time resident of Benita Springs since 2001. First, I'd like to thank the mayor, council members, city staff, fire and law enforcement staff for the outstanding job that you all have been doing in the wake of Irma. I can't imagine the amount of stress that you've been under in managing a disaster of this magnitude. And I know that you have all made a lot of sacrifices, and I want to thank you again for that. Our community, Cedar Creek, had flooding in our streets, yards, and lakes, and of course, extensive landscaping damage. But fortunately, there were no damages to homes with the exception of a couple roofs that I'm aware of. And I appreciate Councilman O'Flynn reaching out to see what he could do to help us. I'm here to support the project with Jim Beaver and the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. This green sheet needs to be approved immediately so that the city can coordinate with other local, state, and federal agencies on how to best mitigate current flood damage and prevent future flooding. I attended most of the water task force meetings, and those that I didn't attend, I viewed online. My bottom-line takeaway was that the water has to go somewhere. I'm proud that our city has taken steps to preserve and protect our DRGR as a resource to hold water and mitigate flooding. I'm concerned about areas north of us and how we can coordinate with them to minimize impact. I believe that Jim Beaver and his agency, as well as help from the council, and Matt Feeney can help us figure that out. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Other members of the public? Good evening.
My name is Louis Cobber. I reside at 927 Morton Grove Drive. My comment is regard to Roman numeral 8A on the agenda, which has to do with Mr. Beaver. And my request, I guess I would direct it to Councilman Forbes, I would like to have the opportunity to meet with Mr. Beaver and give him the benefit of something that's on my mind relative to a solution of flooding in our particular area. So hopefully, Councilman, I will be able to do that. If I take the gentleman's time, I would reimburse the city at $70 an hour. But just the opportunity to meet Mr. Beaver, I'm sure he wants some input. Hopefully, my input would be of some value. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Rita Height, and I'm a resident of IBE on Pauline Drive. I've been a resident since 2008. I guess I'm asking for a point of personal privilege here. I guess if flooding is on the agenda, then it's an item on the agenda. I know that the city is overwhelmed. We came down here from Missouri because this is a beautiful city. And I just would like to see -- I know you're not going to have answers to my questions tonight about the river, Imperial River. The river has devastated our community. I don't know if any -- I'm sure some of you have been in our community and saw what the river's done to our community. It's going down slowly, but we're talking about another front coming in this weekend. If there's anything that can be done to help us mitigate that damage that the river has done in our community, and we have residents that are part-time residents, but there's still residents, us, that have homes on that river and coming from the state of Missouri. If, you know, we didn't let people live on the river, then nobody would ever live on the Missouri or the Mississippi River, you know, every time it floods. And to my knowledge, this is the worst flooding that IBE has had, and what I know from this hurricane. So if you could help with giving us some information about what's going to be done with that river. It's a beautiful river. We don't want the river to go away. We just need some information on what's going to be done with the river and any assistance you can help us in IBE because it is still a disaster area in there. So thank you for the point of personal privilege, Mayor. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Make sure we have your name and number, please. Wonderful. Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Kathy Claproot, and I'm the manager of Imperial Benita Estates. I've been in Florida since I was eight, so I pretty much know about hurricanes. However, everything I know about preparing for a hurricane did not help much with Irma being on the river. I've heard a lot through the -- since Irma, and I have a lot of questions. Number one is, my understanding is the river has a big tree blocking it so that it can't drain the way it's supposed to, and kind of everybody knows it's there, but no one gets it out. I mean, trees come out pretty easy, so I don't understand that. I've also been told that the mayor has had a plan for three years trying to improve the river, but he can't get help getting it through. So the Florida, let's face it, tourism is it. If we don't have tourism, we're in trouble. I've always worked in some line where tourism made a difference to my job and my income. And I think that the river, everybody needs to get behind the mayor to make all this happen, so that you have to be at IBE, the people arriving, because they don't just buy a home there, they buy a lifestyle. They buy the beaches. They buy Florida. They come in there, they are in tears. They are crushed. They are heartbroken. We're losing a lot of tourists. They're not coming back. They've been too heartbroken. And I have to listen to that every day. So I go home and crash every night because I can't do anything for these people except for smile and give them a hug and give them all the information I can. There's also been a bit of a breakdown in communication. At the first town hall meeting, I stood up and asked the mayor, "We pick up our own trash. We pick up our own trees. Are we going to get help from the city to pick up everything? We haven't seen anyone." I've called poor city managers several times, talked to Jane a half a dozen times. I have to meet her. She's been a huge help. Today, one of my residents called and got the volunteer line. And so the girl, being what she could do to help, got her to Public Works. So I talked to several of you, "When are we going to get the trash picked up? We can't get to it. We only have two trucks. We're waiting for help, but we can't get it." Come to find out today, there was a form I had to fill out for this to happen, and no one I talked to knew this. That's a breakdown of communication, and it was very hurtful to my residents because they're very upset about the trash. So that's a definite breakdown of communication. And also, I did get that form in today, so hopefully we'll get some help there. And I do appreciate everything everybody's done. Another little breakdown of communication was your help line, which I understand that's all volunteers. It was a great idea, and I appreciate it. But anybody I talked to said, "Oh, call the help line. Call the help line." I'd call the help line, they say, "Man, we can't help you. All we do is food, a place to live, and water." So a little bit of a communication breakdown there, too. So I know my plan for hurricanes is changing, so maybe y'all can kind of make some adjustments there. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Patrica. I'm here from the Lee County School Board. And I want to start by echoing some of the comments that were made here tonight, thanking you for your leadership and the tremendous work that you've done before, during, and after the storm. I have followed you closely. You're my neighbors. I live in Astero, and I've been truly impressed with the efforts that you've made. And I also want to extend to you the opportunity to work with the school district in the event you become aware of any students or families who are suffering in ways that we can help them. Our outreach continues, so we can't -- we might not be able to find out about every single need for every single student and family in our district, but if you become aware of something, please let us know so that we can help those families. We certainly have leadership in each of our buildings, making sure that families are getting what they need, but in the event we miss something, I'd like you to be able to communicate with us about that. That is not the main reason why I came here tonight. It is in the spirit of collaboration and partnership that I come here tonight. There is an agenda item for you, a green sheet regarding BSU credits, and I -- excuse me, coming here tonight to ask for your cooperation in helping us to decrease the cost to the district in terms of getting the sewer and the water connections to the Benita Springs High School. And I have very capable staff with me who can talk to you about the details of that. Is it okay if I turn it over to them?
Yes, and we're going to have a presentation just here in a few minutes, right after public comment, so we can -- why don't we just hold it just a few minutes, if that's okay, Chris?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Carolyn Gallagher from Cedar Creek, where we also experienced flooding twice, once before Irma and once during. So I'm speaking to you on 8A. And I'm asking you to support Councilmember Forbes' proposal, number 17100375 -- 74, excuse me, to hire Jim Beaver to mitigate the flooding experienced in the city. Mr. Beaver is well-qualified and experienced, and he has previously worked with the city and briefed the Water Task Force several years ago on similar subjects. Now, Councilmember Forbes' proposal furthers the city's support of flooding reductions as enumerated in the Water Task Force recommendations, for example, buying relevant property from willing sellers and emphasizing protecting undeveloped lands for water storage and so on. So I'm also hoping that the $2,018 budgeted for Spring Creek dredging and trimming will remain in the budget because it is definitely relevant to Mr. Forbes' proposal and because there are other non-Benita Springs players who may want to use Spring Creek to carry their storm water in addition to our water. So it behooves us having a clear, cleaned Spring Creek ability, its ability to carry that water. So again, thank you for letting me speak, and thank you for all that you've done for Irma and the flooding that we've had. And please approve the green sheet. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Larry Kurlander. I live in Benita Springs, and I'm here to support Councilman Forbes' green sheet. And I'd like to talk about -- everybody's talked about the substance of his proposal. I'd like to talk about the process for a moment. While this is -- while his proposal does not utilize a normal government process, I believe it is absolutely essential that the council move forward with this expeditiously. Sometimes process has to give way to helping people. And to delay this, to go through a normal bidding process, when we know the people involved, when we know all that's there, I think we'd do a disservice to the community. So I would respectfully ask you to approve this expeditiously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
And thank you, Councilman Forbes, for putting this in.
Councilwoman, good evening.
Former Martha Simons for the record. I want to say what other people have said is, please, Jim Beaver is here in the House. If you want to ask him questions, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer them when the time is right. But I'm also here on two water issues. One is the green sheet about having a study by Jim Beaver. We had the Spring Creek Restoration Study, extremely successful. I heard a member of the audience here saying, "Hey, you know, ask me about -- I think part of this study will do outreach in the community," as his studies usually do. I also hope it includes a land use looky, because in our comp plan, I've been talking about this for a long time, but in our comp plan from day one, we talked about an Imperial River overlay, and I think that's -- could be very useful, and a Spring Creek overlay could be very helpful in, you know, the work that needs to be done to help prevent flooding. I think the reason why Benita, Old Benita is where Old Benita is, is because in the 1890s, Quinn Street flooded. That area was the first settlement of Benita Springs, and it flooded, and people moved a little west. So the more we build, the more we're going to flood. I want to thank Councilman Forbes for putting this together. It's simply, everything that's on the front page, I'm not sure about all that stuff. I don't like hardening of riverbanks and stuff, but I think we have a scientist in the House who can do a good study and has institutional knowledge that can bring you everything to the table, and he knows all the former studies and players. Okay, the second thing is, our Lions Club, along with Benita Springs Community Lions Club, the new Lions Club in town, I think we have a couple of members here. Could you just raise your hands real quick? Yep, okay, some here, like, eight of us. Some of the characters you saw already pull up here. We're teaming up with CGT Kayaks to present the 10th Annual River Fest, but this year with a twist, River Fest for Irma Relief. So the money that we're going to raise, we're going to put into the Lions Club Charity Fund, and that will all go to relief for families in the city. The river is our joy, but also it's been, you know, not so joyous this season, and so we want to give back to the community for what the river has given us and what the river has given us. So, and I also want to commend the volunteers who were up on the Upper River and cleaned all the foam out of the river. There was a lot of foam that had blown off out of roofs and stuff, and they, I guess about 20 people were up there cleaning that out, and advanced disposal. I think the city helped get advanced disposal to take that away. So lots of partnerships going on, and, you know, all the people who've been in the community from outside of our community coming in to help. I tell you, people from Astero have helped me tremendously, and our partnership with Astero, they came over and chainsawed. I had about 30 people this time coming over to help me get trees down. They're not all done yet, but, you know, we have people in the community and outside the community who are helping us, and I just want to say thank you to them.
Great.
And please support the River Fest for Irma Relief. Thanks, and hope that we see everybody there.
Thank you very much. Good evening, John.
Yeah, Council, John West for the record. I would like to recommend that you approve the ANC credits for the school. I think that's a very good use of those credits. But I want to speak about Councilman Forbes' proposal to use the services of Jim Beaver. I hope that you will go forward with this. Jim Beaver is ideally suited to provide the kind of study that we're looking for. I've just come back from Citrus Park. I drove around there. What a mess. And I drove all around there, and there's water lying everywhere and still, and that's up there, let alone what we've got down by the river. It appears to me that there's an awful lot of water on the east side of Benita Grande, and some of that is flowing pretty fast on the north side of East Terry Street. Presumably, it's going down Kent Road. I don't know. But there's a lot to look at, and it'd be very interesting to hear what Mr. Beaver has to say. I hope you will approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Holly DeJolarmo, and I'm representing the Pine Crest Drive neighborhood. We're still underwater back there on Riverview Drive, and with Irma, we were underwater for 12 to 14 days. Now, as our homes are gutted and we're about to restore, of course, we want to know a basic plan on some drainage issues, but also what else we're finding is with the horticultural waste now, as they pick it up, there's still much laying on the ground, and leaves and such are plugging our drains. So now with our basic thunderstorms and rains, we're filling up again, and, you know, we're trying to recover from the 14 days underwater, so please take note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public? Hello there. Hi, Terry.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Simmons and Council and members of the audience. I was not prepared to speak about this, but I want to just make a clarification of some that was mentioned a few moments ago. I would like to introduce myself as Terry Lemain, the Executive Director and President of the Benita Springs Assistance Office. We do much more than food, water, and ice. Our agency provides immediate financial assistance to residents in need of rent, utilities, medical, dental, and transportation needs. On Saturday, October -- excuse me, on Saturday, September 14th, our office was open, and we did 35 FEMA applications, and those clients or those residents of our beautiful city of Benita had $500 immediately put into their banking account before the FEMA office was open. We have also put on blue tarps on elderly residents that are living 130% at or below the poverty line. We've also removed some trees from people's homes that had problems that they called into our number. And we're going to be there in the long haul. We have an infant and toddler diaper bank. We're open six days a week until further notice. We're open at 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And again, I want to reiterate, we still have people living up at the Astero Rec Center that are residents of our wonderful city of Benita. They are living paycheck to paycheck. We're also providing them with gas cards so they can fill their fuel tanks up to go to work in North Naples or to Cape Coral. This is putting a big burden on people. I apologize if I'm taking time with your very important agenda for the city council meeting, but I felt this was the proper time for me to let the community know that the Benita Springs Assistance Office has been a united-way partner and a partner with the city of Benita Springs for 38 years. Please, I encourage you to call, encourage our lovely residents to call. We are working out solutions with Medicaid, Social Security, many, many, many different ways we're helping people. So I appreciate the community effort, and we are working together as a team. We are Benita Strong, and we're working with all the other social services agencies. So thank you again for your time. Thank you for everyone, all your hard work, and I will not take up any more of your time, but I did want to make it quite clear of what our programs and services are to the city of Benita Springs residents. Thank you kindly, and have a wonderful Columbus Day weekend.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you very much.
If you can bear with me, Mayor, the phone number for Love Incorporated is 405-8595. You call that number anytime, and they'll tell you where you can get some help. And I really appreciate Terry's doing a fabulous job. This is just another group that'll help. So thank you.
Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations, and before I hand out, I would ask John Dollinger to come up, but I'm going to, unless there's any objection, under the city manager's report, Item A, review proposal and provide direction to staff on the school board request, I'd like to move that up to Item B here, right after this, unless there's objection. Okay? Laurie, can you come up?
Can I ask also on the agenda if, after that or before that, we can have Carl and Matt just talk about the debris issue, because various people have asked about that tonight.
Yes. Absolutely. And Terry?
I just wanted to take this moment to recognize a good friend of mine, John Dollinger. He lives in Puntagorda. We've been in the American Legion. We both had similar career paths in the Legion as officers, and we've been just good, close friends. And I got a call from him one day, and he said, "Steve, I know you guys have been hit very hard, and is there any way that I can help?" And I said, "Well, I don't know. What are you talking about? I have a tractor-trailer that I can get full of water, and I can have someone drive it down and bring it over to Terry Lemain at the Benita Springs Assistance Office." And then after that, another 35 cases of water arrived at our American Legion, which was giving out free hot dogs and hamburgers to the people suffering with, you know, the loss of their homes and whatever. So John, thank you so much for everything that you do. I know you always loved Benita. You talk about it all the time. Thank you for being here. Bless you. You're my buddy.
Thank you. Thank you, John. I'd like to read this certificate appreciation from the city of Benita Springs, presented to John Dollinger. Past American Legion Southwestern Area Commander, thank you for your service to our great country, the United States of America. Furthermore, your dedication to our city of Benita Springs cannot go unnoticed. Providing the Benita Springs Assistance Office with a tractor-trailer full of water, which was driven down from Orlando, is deeply appreciated. We welcome your generosity and recognize you as a fellow Benetian. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, Terry Lemain, Benita Springs Assistance Office, October 4th, 2017. Thank you, John.
As an American Legion member, Benita Springs was the first place I came. But the American Legion has been in the Keys now for two weeks. Our Department of Florida has delivered now three tractor-trailers full of supplies. Our departments from around the country have delivered another four or five truckloads of materials. As a Legionnaire, we're here to help you. And if you're a member of the American Legion, we have our National Emergency Fund that's here to help you also. Go online, apply for the funds. They're giving funds out, $3,000 every single day. So I encourage you to go ahead and use the opportunities you have. And thank you all for this honor.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, John, and your group that came down, and thank you Steve Slacka and Mayor Peter Simmons for coordinating the efforts. And once again, I want to reiterate to everyone in the room and all the city residents in Benita, this is a team effort. We're all working together, and this too shall pass. So thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Quick picture here, I guess? Okay, Carl, if you want to kick this off, Item B here?
Yes, so some background. So some time ago, a pot of ANC fees were put together at BSU for economic development purposes and also for affordable housing purposes. And basically, it's these ANC credits are much like impact fee credits. They operate the same way. And they are stored at BSU and basically, at the council's direction, those impact fees, those ANC fee credits can be used for those purposes, economic development and for affordable housing. The school board, as we all know, is challenged to build our new high school. We're all very excited about that. But as you know, every dollar counts. And there are some fees that are coming forward from BSU as a normal matter, of course. And they are looking for assistance from the city, from this ANC credit pool, to assist them in handling the impact fees from BSU. That is their request tonight. Counsel, or staff certainly doesn't have any objection. And it's going to be council's pleasure.
Great. Thank you.
And I know there's other representatives who may want to speak. I don't know, so.
Yes. Mark, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Simmons. Good afternoon, I'm sorry, good evening, council members. Mr. Schwing, on behalf of Dr. Atkins, our superintendent, I thank you for all for considering this request tonight and thank Mr. Schwing for bringing it forward to you. As I said before, and I stood behind the, in front of the council during our open house here, as well as giving you an update and presenting the groundbreaking shovels and pins, we have a great relationship with the city council as well as the mayor. And we want to continue that type of relationship going forward. We know how important it is for the school district to collaborate with all of its partners. And in this request, we're not only asking the city to consider using some of the credits they have in their bank, but also the fact that our staff is willing to work with Benita Springs Utilities on reducing the fee as well. What this will allow us to do is take some of the resources that have already been allocated towards the project and pivot them and reprioritize them to be put back into the school for programming that will enhance the program that will deliver the students as well as the facility, which will be an opportunity for all of us, not just our students, but the community of Benita Springs. So again, we thank you for considering this request tonight and appreciate you considering sharing some of the banked ANC fee credits that you have here in the city of Benita Springs. I'm going to turn it to Dawn Huff. She is our Long Range Planner to give a little bit more details in regards to what we're actually requesting.
Great. Thank you, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor Simmons, Mr. Schwing, and council members. My name, as Mark said, my name is Dawn Huff. I'm the Long Range Planner for the school district. And I want to thank you for allowing me to comment on our request for the school district to utilize the city of Benita Springs BSU ANC credits. Excuse me. The district has worked diligently over the past two years to obtain property and construct a high school within the city of Benita Springs and have coordinated with city staff throughout this process. As construction continues for Benita Springs High School, connection to potable water and wastewater utilities will be needed, as you know. And the ANC fee is based on the number of connections needed for the potable water and wastewater system and is based on the meter size. The ANC fee credits, or ANC fee credits for Benita Springs High School is just under 320,000, which equates to about 98 credits. There are additional expenses above and beyond the ANC fees due to BSU and the district will be responsible for this, for those items, such as inspection fees, backflow preventers. But allowing the use of the credits would indeed help tremendously. District and city staff work well together, such as the recent interlocal agreement to share facilities with City Park and the school, or the future school. Although we already have a good rapport with one another, this would demonstrate and enhance the relationship between the two entities. The school represents a support system to the community and the city and this would be a good use of taxpayer dollars with the least possible expenditures of public funds. I hope you'll consider this request and I thank you for your time this evening.
Great, thank you. I was going to say, council? Yes, Fred?
How much money beyond the 300 and some thousand dollars are you going to be paying?
Fred, can you, I'm sorry.
How much money above and beyond this request will you be paying BSU?
It's around $12,000, just under $12,000. But we also have the other fees involved with them as far as the utilities that were brought to the facility were responsible for those fees.
And then, now, the cost for the meters, is that in this money you're asking for the credits?
Yes.
Okay. Is there, I got a question for Mark then. Is there, is there any, in the rest of your school system, have the utility companies actually kind of forgiven some of the fees they normally charge because it was for a public good?
We've worked with one additional municipality and Mr. Schwing might remember this from Cape Coral when we were building Island Coast High School. We had to get water lines to that school and we had to actually partner with the city in building De Navara Parkway and also bringing that utility in. We did share the cost with the municipality in that particular case.
Okay, council?
I have a few other things.
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
It's important to say what Dawn said. We've had a great relationship. Don't know Dawn that well, but Chris and Mark stalwarts for two years on this. Some of the best public servants we have in the county. So my questions are in that context. First one is actually for Carl. None of these credits come out of Bamboo Village, the ANC's from there?
They all came out of Bamboo Village.
All right, so Bamboo, so the city in effect was paying for these credits for a long time.
There was an implication in what you said, perhaps, that we were given these credits? No.
All right.
We were paying $40,000 a year.
Right, right.
Right.
So it's a significant amount of money that we were paying to build this up.
Correct.
All right. I don't know if Mary Mima is here, if she wants to speak on behalf of BSU. But if any BSU person is here, I do have a question about, what about BSU forgiving this in the interest of helping this great organization we have here, which is our school district? Don't mean to put you on the spot, Mary, but interested to know.
It's liberating, Mary. Get put on, get put on the spot.
Good evening, Mary Mima, Benita Springs Utilities. And I think you can understand that I can't answer that question. I would have to defer to our Board of Directors.
All right. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
That makes perfect sense. I'm just, I definitely, my personal view is we need to work with the school district. But I'd like to understand a little bit more about this, what we've paid for this, what BSU could do to try to find a solution that various people, including the city, can help chip in with, to help our friends in the school district, is my notion.
Okay. Fred? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think people need to understand. I mean, we got this the other day. We're obviously in the middle of a lot of priorities. This is the first time we saw it. Not really time to talk to staff about it and understand it, so.
Fred, you had one thing?
Yeah, well, I was going to agree with what the deputy mayor said. I think that we should allow maybe a couple, three weeks where either one of us can talk to BSU and Carl and see if they can do something and it gives us more to knowledge on what we need to do and see if we can work it out.
Right.
Because actually, the way I view it, the high school is a big public benefit to the whole city, the surrounding area. And actually, they're going to, I know the water bill they're going to generate monthly is going to be horrendous. Water and soup. Well, it's going to be. It's fact of life. They've got showers. They've got big cafeteria. It's going to be big, so. And it's a good thing for the city. And it's indirectly, it's economic development. It's something we need. But I think we ought to see if we can work out something that's slightly better deal than, but I don't want to hold the high school and the school board up.
Could I ask Mark if we consider that at our next meeting, for example, would that be okay?
Absolutely. When you look at the construction timeline, a definitive decision doesn't need to be made until probably springtime. So I think we do have the time to work on it a little bit more.
And I would just suggest, because we're doing weekly meetings because of the hurricane, perhaps we just, two weeks? I mean, I don't think a week is quite enough time, but yeah, either the second or third weekly meeting from now, I think, I think would be apropos. Council, Amy?
Well, the only point I want to make, and I definitely am on the team in regard to working with the Board of Education to put this wonderful high school in our community. And we appreciate the cooperation that we've developed and we want to continue it. But apart from that, I have concern about using these credits because they are, the purpose from what I understand is for affordable housing. And because of what we've been going through this, these past couple of weeks, I think that we are going to be in a housing crisis personally. So we have to include, we have to be considerate of how we could advance these other needs within our communities. So I would be in favor of trying to work something out with BSU because I'm not convinced that we can afford to use them at this time without understanding our other needs for that. So I think we have to understand why we have them in the first place. Why have we been warehousing them? So that's my concern. But as I agree with you that, you know, this came to us this week, so there's lots of things to think about. And I don't think we're prepared to make a decision at this time.
Great. Thank you, Amy. Greg?
No, I just, I just didn't want to hold the school board. I think that if it's going to hold them up, we need to make a vote on it because as we're getting ready to come down to the wire here in the next couple of minutes, we're going to make a decision on something that we didn't have much time to look at either, but we're going to make that decision too. So if they're all right with waiting for two or three weeks, that's fine.
Right. It's playoff time. They're telling us we have till spring training, but we don't intend, we don't intend to take anywhere near that long. So it sounds like we'll be okay. Steve?
I agree with Greg. It's perfect.
Do, Mike? Okay. Do we want to make any kind of a?
Just defer it, right?
Yeah, we'll just defer it and know that we look forward to working together. Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris, and everybody.
Could I just ask your indulgence to have Carl and Matt talk about the debris pickup because various people have asked about that?
Yes. And here's Matt.
Matt Feeney, Public Works Director, for the record. Debris operations have been going for about two weeks, two-plus weeks now. Obviously, this storm, as well as the storms that impacted Texas, have impacted all contractors in the state of Florida's ability to really gather assets. So we have been working through that, fighting through that challenge, but we have been picking up storm debris. We have been building assets, so just received two more trucks, I believe, today for the collection operations. We've been focused along areas that were hardest hit. We have recently had the opportunity to be able to pick up debris in the flood-impacted areas along Polly and Quinn Street. We did pick up that debris or started those operations yesterday, I believe. That is treated a little differently. It is hauled directly to the landfill or a landfill transfer station site due to the nature of the debris. So it is picked up by the same trucks, but it goes through a little longer process. The horticultural debris, which we've been focused on and will continue to be focused on along with this debris, is chipped and then hauled to a final station. We do have that going. I've been working to open up additional debris storage sites. Been working hard with the city attorney as well as others to reach out to landowners to find sites that are dry and large that are centrally located within the city. And that has been a challenge, but we continue to work on that. I've been actually talking to the contractor while we're in this meeting. This will be a slow process. It will involve two passes. So, you know, if we haven't, if you didn't get everything out to the street on the first go-around, that we will be back to pick up more and that is part of the recovery process. Key points are not to mix debris, to keep it separate. Keep the vegetative debris separate from the construction debris. Please implore folks not to pilot on backflow preventers, which are small water valves we were just talking about with the school board, as well as fire hydrants or anything else, because it's very hard for the folks to see them when they recover. And we don't want to cause damage to anyone's water service. We are, we will be working towards providing scheduling. Right now, we do not have the resources on the ground, sufficient numbers to be able to really derive an effective schedule. But we are working towards that and that remains a number one priority for us to be able to communicate to the community. We are reaching out and continue to reach out, and we have since, oh, probably three days after the storm, to gated communities, mobile home communities, to be able to pick up their debris. We've asked folks to execute rights of entry degree, rights of entry agreements that will help us with the federal reimbursement process. This is not something that the federal folks typically authorize, but we have sent letters, as well as our partners in Lee County, to ask FEMA consider our ability to go into those communities. And we have been working where we can in those communities and will continue to. Those agreements are not holding us up. They are not the, you know, the gatekeeper, so to speak, for our efforts. We are doing the recovery efforts as best we can and will continue to do so. But we do ask that folks get those back. We've had very positive returns from those so far. And Audrey's folks have really been helping us out with getting those executed and ground-truthing them.
Thanks, Matt. And I would just add real quick, Pete, for folks that might be wondering, okay, so-and-so's neighborhood's been picked up. When's our neighborhood going to be picked up? Just kind of talk through the process or the priority. I hate to use that word priority because then it makes it sound like one neighborhood's more important than the other. And I know that's not the process, but could you talk along those lines?
In terms of priority, there really only been a couple. One is, I think Carl mentioned, was to open up the area around the elementary school because we have a lot of folks that walk to school. So we, that's not all debris clearing. That's been clearing of trees. We also failed to mention, we have 11 bucket crews working throughout the city that are cutting limbs that are potential hazards to folks on sidewalks as well as motoring public. So that operation's still going on. So we focused in that area, kind of right out of the gate. And then, as soon as the water did recede and we saw the construction debris starting to pile up from the areas affected by the flooding, we did make every effort to try and start picking that up because it can become, it can become a significant nuisance, obviously, as folks are trying to recover and get their lives back to some semblance of normalcy. In terms of priority, it's a methodical, we're not hopscotching through the community. We're working in a methodical, roughly east to west push, so to speak. As we get more resources in, we will develop more of a schedule and be able to communicate that to folks.
Yeah, and the only thing that I might add, and Carl and I have been in communication every day and I see you just about every day, Matt, just like I said, out there in the field. For the folks, like in, you know, the Quinn Street area, the areas that were really badly flooded, really badly flooded, is there a way to work through that? And, you know, because those people are ripping out drywall and the like. And, you know, down there today, of course, in the piles, and I know that people worked over the weekend, but there's a lot of piles there and a lot, lot going on.
We are working it. Carl has had advanced disposal, had multiple shifts, which has been helping us. And you can see the difference on that. This debris will continue to come out. I have experienced this before with storms on Fort Myers Beach. It continues to come as folks continue in the recovery process. And we have devoted, as soon as we're able to, resources in that neighborhood. And that was with the large disaster trucks we've dedicated to that area. So I think we're doing what we can do with the resources we have. And we're continuing to find additional sites or try to get those opened up and then bring additional resources into this community so that we can get things back to normal.
And just to add to what Peter said, Pinecrest was mentioned here tonight. I assume it would be in a similar category as the Quinn Street area.
Absolutely. And I've been communicating those priorities to our contractor as well because we don't want that, we don't want to do two things. One is, I want to continue on the horticultural debris as we can, which we are. But also to dedicate resources to get those flooded folks, as they're able to start the recovery process, to get that wet, drywall and flood-damaged material out of there because it will become a nuisance.
Maybe if you have a minute, you can chat with the lady from Pinecrest who had asked a question. I think she's still here.
Sure.
Give me a second. All right, thanks.
Great. Council, Fred?
So somebody else, I think, was from IV and they were talking about the same thing.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we know the neighborhoods, but if we could just work with the residents, that would be wonderful. I continue to work with the residents.
Thank you, Matt.
But, yeah. Thank you, Matt.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Carl.
Just to add to it, so, just for clarification, so down in the Quinn area, in those areas south of Dean that flooded as well, we did call in six additional trucks on Saturday and Sunday for over and above service, which the city's paying for, and those trucks were dedicated to the Quinn area on both Saturday and Sunday. And they carried out 12 loads, 90 cubic yards a load. So, they worked hard this weekend. They did not finish that neighborhood because it was so badly damaged. It is heartbreaking to see people's lives sitting out on the curb, and that's what we're seeing in that community. So, we've already retained advance to come in this weekend, same schedule, hopefully the same number of trucks, because we can make some progress there, visible progress for those folks and others.
Right.
Right, right.
Counsel? Anything else? Okay, great. So, I guess we'll move on to the consent agenda now. Please take a look. Counsel, anything, anybody wants to pull, or motion to approve?
You do have an errata on this one. You do have an errata for consent.
Let's see, errata.
It's the special events permit for Riverfest.
Oh.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'd like to pull...
Okay, motion to approve, and I'll sec, go ahead, which one do you like to pull?
I'd like to pull B and C and D.
B, C, and D. Counsel, anything else? Okay, motion to approve the rest, motion, there's been a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slatter.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Okay, item B, Pete.
Yeah, I'll go quick, maybe take them backwards. D, really not to talk about DeRomo's particularly, but as much as, I know there's a lot going on, but at one point, we had talked about staff looking at trying to have an expedited process, so outstanding organizations, whatever the standard is, don't have to come back and back again. So, I'm just using this as an occasion to ask if there's any update on that, knowing we had some other stuff going on recently.
Hello, I'm the Director of Communications, Laura Taylor, and you are correct, we have been working on that. We had it set to come before you, right as the storm was getting ready to hit, so we did ask to delay that slightly, and we plan to bring it to the next meeting. We've been working on the communications for the storm at this point.
Great, thank you, Laura. So, move to approve D.
Okay, second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman Slatter.
Aye.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Okay.
So, on B, just a little background on that, in other words, would this is right construction, an additional $387,000, this is downtown, what, is that over on top of the 15, too? Or is it, what, what is that? Or 15, whatever it was?
Okay, so my understanding is, is that this has already been budgeted.
Right.
This is just adding on to the contract itself.
Right.
For this particular service.
Okay.
And it's the electrical connections downtown.
Okay, so, just at some point, if we could have a total, not tonight, of actually how much the total ended up being, or is going to end up being with respect to right, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Move to approve.
Second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slatter.
And quickly on C, this is an additional $32,000 for wall drop engineering. I know there's a green sheet on it, kind of explains it, but maybe a little more color on that would be appreciated. Is that Arlene?
So, good evening, Arlene Hunter, Assistant City Manager. We have been working with wall drop engineering, as you can see, on updates to Land Development Code. This started in July of 2015, under the supplemental task authorization. At this point, to do any additional scope work, which we had discussed previously with the adopted amendments to the comprehensive plan, and specifically, we had not updated the Land Development Code regarding the previous resolution that we had for complete streets.
Okay.
There are some nuts-and-bolts-type features we'd like to make sure that are looked at through the LPA and through the city council, as would be development requirements in the future, for future developments, to make sure that those future developments are providing connectivity and meeting the goals of that resolution, meaning the goals of our Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. As we move forward with a potential contract with Alta, the idea would be that these land development regulations would also be reviewed by them as well. But this is for private development and making sure that those developments are connecting with the overall goals of the comprehensive plan, as well as connectivity, the complete streets resolution for future development.
Thank you very much. Move to approve.
Okay, second, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilman O'Flynn.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Forbes.
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt.
Aye.
Councilman Slatter.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to, we have the errata, but does that need a special motion to approve? The approval of special events permit for Riverfest 4, Irma Relief Event at Riverside Park, Lyles Hotel Plaza on Saturday, October 21st, 2017, and that's green sheet 17-10-0377. Motion to appro, yes, Carl.
It's my understanding you approved that already.
Wonderful.
As a part of the list.
Wonderful, just making sure. Okay, we'll move on now to mayor and council member items. We have an errata sheet item here, approved contract with the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council with Jim Beaver as principal investigator and study administrator. This is Councilman Fred Forbes, green sheet 17-10-0374. Fred.
Right. First of all, let me say that what was done wasn't the standard way, but it was done perfectly legal. It replicates the model that was established with Florida Gulf Coast University with the EER project. It's also similar to what was done on the Spring Creek restoration, and that normally the staff would have written the workscope. The staff person that would have written it, the most qualified to write it, was Matt Feeney. Matt Feeney was covered up to whatever with alligators and stormwater and trying to unplug stoppages and involved in all this tree collection of debris and stuff like that. I wrote this, I consulted with Mr. Beaver at different points. When it came back into the city staff before it went out to you, city staff reviewed it, including Matt Feeney, and I think that the one thing that justifies the fact that this was done in a somewhat non-standard way is by the end of the month, or earlier, we have to have proposals to the legislative sponsors of bills. The clock is running. If we went any other way where we went out and selected from a competitive selection, it would be the end of January before we'd have a contract. Now, just like Florida Gulf Coast University, they've had under the EER wall drop engineering. They also have another firm, and we, it would be my intention that we would, very shortly, be looking at bringing in an engineering-type firm so that as projects are delineated, if council wanted to move forward with any of them, that we would have an engineering firm onboard that would be able to do it. And it's got to be a top-quality firm. It's also got to be, because we might be investigating increases in development standards of new, it's got to be a firm that's going to be independent of those developers that are always wanting to develop land. I hate to say it that way, but that's a fact of life.
Right.
If Mr. Beaver is here, if any of you want to ask him a question or two, or whatever, fine, and I know some of you had a chance to meet with it, with him, and you did, you did, I did keep my word when I told you I was doing this, I think on Wednesday, I said you'd have this in draft by the end of the week, and you got it. I would say it took me most of the week to get it done, too, so, all right, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Mike? Pete?
No, I just want to thank Frank, Frank, where's Frank? I just want to thank Fred for his leadership on this and hopping all over this. This is no small task that's been accomplished here. And, you know, when I saw Jim Beaver's name, I said, my gosh, we have the Mickey Mantle of the area. I don't, why would we be looking elsewhere? He's got decades of experience in this area, and the honors that he has received are really too numerous to mention, they're in there. But I can tell you one that I saw two and a half years ago, when I was over at the Educational Aid Foundation in the Keys with Kurt Clausen, and actually Senator Nelson was there, and Jim was honored that day singularly for his work with respect to water sources and the distinguished career he has had. So, I think it's a blessing that we have Jim available to us, and I want to thank Fred for doing what he's done here. The other thing that is in here as well, I've noticed about Fred's continuing involvement as the point person on this, considering his experience with the Water Task Force and everything we've gone through, including for people who didn't hang around City Hall then, constant talk about flooding is just a scare tactic here, we don't have to worry about 95 flood, that's what we used to hear in these chambers. Fred was one of the voices of, solid voices of reason with respect to concepts like holding water on the land. So, I think it's really fitting how Fred has organized this structure, and I would just add to that, if it's not in here, that Fred should be, in my view, the contact person in the city, working with staff with respect to any FEMA issue that would involve mitigation, the possibility of preserving land and projects, because we need a real direction going forward on this. So, those are my comments.
Thanks. Fred?
Before we open us up to Mr. Beaver, I want to make two or three things clear. Number one, anytime a member of council has something that they feel that we aren't investigating, that we should, this is not written in stone, there's no final conclusions made. Mr. Beaver will be offering suggestions. We'll probably get good suggestions from members of the public, and we'll have to work out a system where basically weekly, you all will be able to talk to Mr. Beaver either by a conference call, sometimes a Skype or whatever, sometimes it'll be in room 118. There's got to be ways for public to make input and know what we're doing in real time.
Great, thank you. Steve?
Good.
Greg?
Like I said, I just don't like the way it went down. I don't agree with the way it went down. I know time is of the essence, but, you know, Fred, Councilman Forbes, trying to convince us that this was done the right way, is it wasn't done the right way, in my opinion? I'm going to support it. I just don't like the way it was done. It was done, in my opinion, you know, when we asked about it Wednesday, it was, well, we can't say anything, we can't say anything, which I don't agree with. We're using taxpayers' money. When this is all said and done, it's three or four months down the road. It's not something that, it's not a silver bullet. At that meeting Wednesday, I believe it was you, Councilman O'Flynn, that said there was three or four studies out there from the Water Task Force, when I made the suggestion we should get a study done. And I was told that there's three or four of them out there. We don't need to do another study, but here, we're doing another study.
Yeah, I don't see...
And I'm just saying, I, I, I'm going to support it, I just don't agree with the process. To say it was done with FGCU and the EER, the EER and FGCU wasn't done in a week. That was done over a couple of weeks. It may not have went out the bid, but it was done not in a, not in a, less than a week's timeframe.
Right.
That's my dismay with this whole thing. When asked about it, very elusive, I didn't agree with that. And then when you said you sit there and wrote it, and you consulted with the person that we're getting ready to give this to, to help write it, it just doesn't bode well with me on being transparent and up and up.
I will, I'd like to correct a couple things. Number one, I consulted with him after I had it written. He came down and he read this, went through it, made a couple suggestions and all that. I apologize if my not wanting to disclose exactly what I was doing, it may not have been the proper thing to do, but I wanted to get this done, and I needed to get it done quick, because every week is ticking by, and it's like that thing we have to do, we got to come up, we're going to have to have stations starting this next Wednesday on what we think are priorities of water. We're going to have to have Mr. Beaver's, his initial input, input a week later and all that. I do think, I do know that Director Matt Feeney read it and reviewed it, and he, I don't think he had any negative comments about, he is here if you want to ask him what he thought.
Okay, great. Amy?
I do think that this is definitely something that needs to be done, and my communication that I distributed to council while I was away on September 16th suggested that we needed a citywide stormwater management review, and I was very concerned about how the different areas of our community were integrated and the problems that we're having in specific areas. So, there's no question in my mind that this is something that has to be done. The timing of it, I can understand because of legislative criterion that we're constrained with, and unless we want to wait for another year to get our, our requirements or our asks into the legislature, I think, you know, we have to go forward with this because, you know, the three, four weeks is not enough to go through any kind of regular process. And I do think that the Regional Planning Agency historically has provided these kinds of studies to us as part of their mission, and because they, they themselves are changing the nature of the, of the interactions with the different communities, it is, it is, seems like a no-brainer that we have their best man coming forward to help us with this study. And what I would like to see from it in the near term is really the short-term solutions, because that's what's most imminent right now, and then to follow up with the longer-term solutions. And that's the longer-term solutions that I think we, as a community, can take a little bit more time with. So, I'm in favor of it. I'm a person that's very much into process, so this is a little difficult for me, but I appreciate the effort that Councilman Forbes has made and applying his wonderful expertise, and we're fortunate to have him, and we're fortunate to have Mr. Beaver here available to us. I don't think it's as irregular as it may seem because of the normal procedures that happen with the Regional Planning Agency, and because the funding for that has been somewhat interrupted because of the position of the, of the Lee County, they're, they're doing the same job that they've always done, but now we have to pay for it, and that's what's happening. So, I see it as a pretty common thing, and I appreciate your availability, and I look forward to working with you should we vote in favor of this.
Greg?
I just had, I guess, a follow-up question. I mean, twice now, I've heard that we need to get this in for legislation, legislative reasons. So, is that our goal? Is that whatever this study comes in, that we're going to wait for the legislature to pay for it, instead of us ponying up and doing what's right and getting this done sooner than later? Because that's between Councilman Forbes and now Ms. Corumba saying that we need to get this in before January, we need to hurry up and get it in before January. There's a rush, there's a rush.
Yeah.
I mean, to me, for the last two years, priorities have been Pine Lake Preserve, still hasn't been approved. You know, there's no guarantee this is going to be approved, so to me, I understand the rush, and I want a rush, and let's get it done, but to wait on the legislation to find out if we get the funding, it starts in January, and it runs for 60 days, so it's not going to be done until, you know, until March, we won't know anything until March. Again, March is going to start, it's the middle of the dry season, and, you know, from construction and all that, this needs to be done now. We need to, if Mr. Beaver comes in with this study and says something needs to be done in January, that's when this is going to come due. We need to start construction, funding whatever in January. We don't need to wait for the legislature. Maybe we can get reimbursement, maybe not, but it's, to wait for the legislation...
I think, sorry, Greg.
I'm just saying, to wait for the legislature, we're waiting two years now for Pine Lake Preserve, and still haven't gotten it.
Fred, and then Peter.
Yeah, the, well, first of all, I agree with what Councilman DeWitt has said, there's all kind of ways we're going to get money besides spending our own, besides the legislative approach, and I don't think Pinecrest was in for the previous year, was it? I think it was... I think it, this was the first year, I believe.
Yeah, I believe it was last year.
But anyway, but I agree with what he's saying. First of all, Phil Flood, head of South Florida Water Management, has said that the, even the Speaker is saying he wants water flooding projects. He has set up a special committee, an ad hoc committee of legislators. I think Ray Rodriguez is either chair or co-chair.
Co-chair.
So there, there is money that they want to give out. Secondly, Mr. Beaver has a long history of being able to get grants for some different things that are covered in this. Thirdly, I agree with Greg, we must be prepared, especially on some of the things that could be a quick fix. We may have to pony up and do those right now. So it's, I, it's, it's, uh, it's, we're going to try for everything we can. Any way we can get extra money, South Florida Water Management's another, another source. I'm not even so sure that we shouldn't be asking the county because at the Governor Scott press conference, and I think at another conference where we had a county commissioner there, they said they were, wanted to see something, were committed to improving the flooding of the Imperial River. And the Imperial River is in Benita. It's also in Lee County. So I, I think we ought to talk to them. That doesn't, I think there's room in the boat for people to, everybody help, you know? But I agree with everything that Greg has said.
Great, thanks. Peter? You're good?
Yes, I just want to, um, reiterate how important it is for timing for a request to the state legislature this year. Um, I don't, I don't want to lose the opportunity to ask this year. We may not get it, but the bottom line is, is that, you know, the timing is unfortunate for us because we have to work so hard to get something out to the legislature, but at the same time, it's fortunate because everyone is so sensitive to what has just happened to this community and others in this, in this state. And so, and that's why the ARADA is showing up on the city manager's report tonight, talking about some projects. We don't have dollar amounts, we haven't been able to put those together, but those might be some of those quick fixes that, uh, Councilmember Forbes is talking about. I do agree that, uh, we need to be looking at all of our funding partners, uh, the state, obviously, uh, FEMA, obviously, and also Lee County because they've got local mitigation strategy funds up there. And I think there should be an expectation on our part that we will be receiving some significant amount of funding from them because, uh, in terms, when you talk to FEMA, they say they've got three of the worst-hit locations in Florida, or the Keys, Everglade City, and Benita Springs. Benita Springs is in Lee County. So we are hopeful we're going to see, uh, some opportunities for funding from the county as well.
Right. Counsel, anything else? Uh, Jim?
Well, I'm basically here to answer any questions. Um, the way I see it, we're going to be looking at a variety of solutions to a variety of different flood reduction issues. There's not just one, single project that's going to address all the different flooding problems you have within Benita Springs. And some of these will be very quick. Some of them are going to be long-term and then ultimately we'll be looking at trying to restore the hydrology of your river and creek system so they function better and don't do this type of flooding into the future. And some of that's going to be large-scale and it's going to take a significant amount of work in the upper watershed, but other things can be done relatively quickly within the watershed itself. So the options we're going to work on, we'll be coordinating with you, with the citizens of the community, and then those will be the ones that'll go to the legislature quickly. And that's one of the very first deliverables in the project. And then as we get to the end of the year, you'll be seeing the full range of projects available that you could undertake. And from there, you'll be able to select what you want to do at short, mid, and long term. And as in anything, you're going to probably looking at partnerships. And I think that some of the things you'll be looking at will be joint partnerships, not just with one entity, but with multiple entities. Maybe the federal, state, water manager district, and your county so that you have a coherent, full watershed solution for what's going on with the watersheds of Benita Springs and the headwaters, which all exist outside of your community.
Okay. Peter?
Yeah, so, thank you, Jim. And once again, thanks for being here for us and available for us. So the operative word is solutions. It's not studies. We're not talking about another study. No one's ever talked about another study. Uh, you know the studies that have been done, you know the Army Corps of Engineers work, you know the Arnold Report, you know the ninety-five study, you know the ninety-nine study, you know the two thousand and nine study, and you probably know ten other ones.
And the twenty-ten.
And the twenty-ten, et cetera. So, uh, just want to say, really privileged to have you here. Um, and it's, it's, we're really lucky. Thank you.
You know, and I'll, I'll just ask, I guess for the curiosity of anybody, and you know, this is horse before the cart, I'm famous for saying things the wrong way. What would you say to, you know, if this does pass, would be an immediate, an immediate, um, one of the first places you would look?
Areas where we have significantly identified blockages and we could remove those blockages right now. And also clean and snag of your tributaries.
And I know in the conversation we had this morning, you know, there's water not flowing down Spring Creek that should flow down Spring Creek, just for, I guess, for starters here, is there more you'd like to kind of add to that conversation, Jim?
Well, those are longer-term because we, we've got to get the headwaters reconnected back to that part of Spring Creek, but there's also things which we identified in the Spring Creek study that you already have from the work I did with you, that needs to be done in that upper Spring Creek so it's ready to receive the increased flows that would, could come from having a better headwaters connection to the areas of the Flint Pen Strand.
And, and just, you know, kicking the can down a little bit more, uh, any legislative roadblocks that you see or any?
Well, we're going to have to be coordination across jurisdictional lines. And so that means that where you've got an established, um, stormwater system like within San Carlos Estates, or where you're going into the Lee County area, you're going to have cooperative agreements established and that may take some legislation.
Right. And when I met with Representative Rodriguez last week, I mean, certainly, and it's no secret, the Speaker of the House has made it clear that water projects and Hurricane Irma relief are the priorities. Are the priorities. And for lack of a better name, I don't recommend, we push too many of our quote-unquote pet projects, which, uh, is difficult, you know, certainly for everybody to swallow, but the reality and the magnitude of what we're looking at is now. Do you have anything to add to that?
That, in all cases, you need to understand, we're talking about flooding reduction. Because any type of category five storm, major multi-day rain event, which is going to put ma- make multiple inches of water on a landscape, there will be some temporary flooding from that regardless of how you engineer the system. But you can reduce flooding so that it's not going to end up causing these multiple days of flooding. And with proper design, you can prevent flooding from getting to groundwater elevations. But it's may take some significant changes over the current basis of review and planning for very short-term, um, storm events, like planning for a five-year, a ten-year flood. We are moving into a period, and we already are in a period, of getting more severe flooding on a more regular basis.
Right, right. Counsel? Thank you, Jim. Okay.
I would move we accept Fred's proposal.
A second, okay. There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slavta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
And Fred, uh, or Peter, I'm going to jump in here just for a quick second because one thing, um, we've been working on in, in relation, obviously, to, to water and our dedication to water and resolving the water. Uh, myself, along with Deputy Mayor O'Flynn and Arlene, and we've been working, as you know, on the Bloomberg Initiative. And so I reached out, um, when Governor Scott called me recently, you know, I said, great, we have FEMA here, thank you, thanks for being here, Governor, thanks for boots on the ground. He asked what else, you know, and I said, well, you know, we've, with everything going on, we have a, a mayor's challenge here, a mayor Bloomberg challenge that, uh, is a high priority for us. And, uh, but we're, you know, we're, we're kind of, we need some direction here, we need some help, we need some extra, we need a set of hands. So, um, his office suggested that, um, we contact, um, a grant writer, so we've reached out to Margaret Wertz, Wertzel, who's going to be working with us. She is, uh, we've had several conversations with her, meetings with her, webinars of the Bloomberg Foundation with her already. And she is working on the mayor's challenge application. She's going to come to the October eighteenth meeting, right, Arlene? So she's going to be here for the October eighteenth meeting. She will get our input, she will read what she has for our input, our wordsmith, our change, our whatever it needs to be, and the application will be in by its deadline, October twentieth. So I just wanted to mention that as an FYI. I don't know, Peter, if you have anything?
No, just quickly to add, Peter, which is, uh, the topic is what we talked about last time, which was reaching outside the United States for bold innovative solutions. That's, that's one of the standards, right, one of the top four standards there. So, uh, bold innovative solutions, uh, the other one is transferability. Forget three and four, but I think tho- those are the, the two top ones that can distinguish this. And just to add, I was on the phone with, uh, Arlene and Margaret yesterday and, really a tip of the hat, uh, this schedule is very, very tight. You know, we're talking about October twentieth, is it, for filing? So from a standard start, um, Margaret is all over it. So thanks to the Regional Planning Commission, once again.
No, absolutely. Thank you. Okay, and then Pete, you had, um, you had an item here.
Well, I just.
Follow-up discussion to Councilmember Fred Forbes' suggestion regarding stormwater utility.
Only because I, I didn't want it to fall, not that it would fall between the tracks, but I wanted to continue to process this. This is the notion of, um, a stormwater utility, which Fred raised, I think, a month ago. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we were continuing, Fred, how would you want to proceed on this to continue to process? That I'm, we said we wanted to.
Yeah, I, actually, I, I would have a proposal. First of all, and, and I thank Audrey for her hard work on this because she's kind of educated me, but I'm still learning that there's, there's like a drain each district that you assess. There's a, you can also have a drain each tax district, and there's probably another combination and all that. I think it, I think that my, my suggestion is even though I'm doing this stuff on the water, let Councilman O'Flynn move off on this part. And then, uh.
Thanks, Peter, for bringing up.
Unless somebody else wants to volunteer for it. I'm, I'm going to be busy with this stuff.
I'd be happy, is Matt here? That's hard to believe, he's working so hard. I, I know Matt has done a lot of backup work on this, uh, including paying the seventy-five bucks to join the Florida Stormwater Association. Um, and, um, there is a lot of predicate for this, uh, all over, literally scores of cities and municipalities, uh, around Florida. Maybe talk a little bit about that and what you've, in the midst of everything else you're doing with water?
Sure. Uh, excuse me. Matt Feeny, Public Works Director, for the record. Uh, the Florida Stormwater Association, um, is an organization that does advocate, you know, best practices in stormwater. And one of those things that they, uh, have a lot of supportive materials for and, and seem to be behind is the idea of a, uh, a stormwater assessment within the community. As we, uh, receive new, uh, regulatory rules for water quality, as well as experience what we've recently experienced in terms of volume, um, it's trying to find a vehicle to be able to address those issues. There's about four hundred plus or minus communities in the state of Florida, I believe, and please don't hold me completely to that number, but.
No, you're right.
That do have Florida, Florida stormwater taxes or assess, or assess, assessment districts. They generate revenues that, that range from, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars up to, to, to millions, uh, double-digit, uh, to, to help address those types of needs in the community. So those assessments can be based on several different things. Uh, it can just be, you know, how many folks are, are in the city. Uh, it can be based on how much area that is impervious, which was, basically means rain doesn't percolate into the ground, uh, or some derivation thereof. So, so we've done some initial assessments along those lines, kind of, you know, just get a feel for where the city is in terms of who we have, who, who has modern stormwater systems versus areas that don't. Um, you know, just to, just to get a ga- an idea of the language that we see the Florida Storm, Stormwater Association works in. Is that?
Yeah, thank you.
So, so we've been, we've been looking at that and have a, you know, a rough idea. Obviously, that information would then be digested if you move forward along these lines by, by how you would apply a methodology.
If counsel's comfortable, I'll work with Matt and Audrey and come forward with something. And I think we talked about having weekly meetings and, um, over the next few weeks, uh, that at least relate to water. I think that's where we ended up last time, so hopefully bring it up in that context as well.
Yeah, no, and I don't.
But that makes sense.
Don't want to limit it to October. If we need to move into November, I think we obviously all will. So, Counsel, do you, anything else for Matt at this time or? Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And Pete, anything else on this?
No, thank you, Peter.
Okay. Wonderful, okay. We're going to move on to item nine, the first reading of the following zoning ordinance, and there's no public comment on this. Audrey?
Thank you. This is a zoning ordinance of the city of, uh, Benita Springs, Florida, considering a request by Mayor Rouge Properties LTD, Hidden Lakes Holdings LLC, to rezone from the residential multifamily district RM two, community commercial district CC, uh, which is CC, special commercial, commercial district CS one, and commercial plan development CPD to residential plan development RPD, permitting a maximum of two hundred forty-one multifamily dwelling units, clubhouse, consumption on premises, and other ancillary residential uses and appearances located at two eight five two one Benita Crossings Boulevard, two eight seven four one Benita Crossings Boulevard, and none addressed parcels with the following strap numbers. And I apologize, I need to read this out. Oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three zero one four oh C, uh, four zeros, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh E dot oh oh CE, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh F, oh oh CE, oh four dash forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four D, oh oh CE, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh B, oh oh CE, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh A, oh oh CE, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh two nine oh B, four zeros, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh G, zero zero CE, oh four forty-eight twenty-five B three oh one four oh I, zero, uh, zero zero CE, on twenty-seven point four acres, more or less, from Benita Springs, Florida, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading of the proposed zoning ordinance. Uh, the second reading and actual public hearing will be on October twenty-third, which is a Monday, nine AM, in these chambers.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slavta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, uh, we're going to move on to item ten, the second reading and public hearing of the following ordinance. Uh, public comment is allowed.
Yes, sir. Uh, let me read the title block into the record. This is an ordinance of the city council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the twenty-seventeen five-year capital improvement program annual update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for exclusion from codification, and providing for an effective date. I have received the affidavit of publication from the city clerk. It is on file with the city clerk and it is legally sufficient. Um, as you recall, during your, um, last meeting in September, not the budget hearing, but September twentieth, um, I mentioned that, um, we would have the local planning agency review this ordinance at its October twelfth meeting. At this time, I'm requesting to continue to a time and date certain after taking public comment, this ordinance to October eighteenth, twenty-seventeen, to provide time for that review.
Okay. Counsel?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Caramba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slavta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Forbes?
Okay, we're going to move on to an ordinance of the City Council of, oh, I'm sorry, public comment. I apologize. Members of the public that would like to speak on this item only, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the second reading. Excuse me, an ordinance of the City Council of Benita Springs, Florida, adopting the 2017 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program Annual Update, providing for legislative findings, providing for severability, providing for exclusion from codification, and providing for an effective date, and this is green sheet 17-100362.
We just completed that one, and that's the, again, I read very fast, so I apologize. That's the one which will go to the local planning agency, in which I requested council to continue to a time and date certain, so that we could have the local planning agency do the review. At this time, I would like to present the next item, or start the presentation of the next item, which is the reason why Mr. Theriak is here, which is, I don't know what I'm talking about. To consider the take action on the petition that was filed by Attorney Neil Montgomery Esquire from Pavey's Law Center on behalf of the applicant BG Mine LLC for contraction of real property from the City of Benita Springs. That would be green sheet 17100363. In this particular case, remember, I, I've talked with council before, there are times where I would have a legal conflict, because I represent council, and sometimes staff needs a different advocate. And I cannot be an advocate, and also the person providing information. So at this time, Mr. Theriak will be providing the advocacy in this case. Prior to him doing so, I'd like to approach council and hand out, and I provided Ms. Montgomery with a copy of this document already, an April 5th, 2017 memorandum I provided council, but I don't expect you to remember what I provided you in April, let alone have it in your back pocket. So if I may provide a copy, and I'll explain the memo very briefly in a minute.
Thank you.
And we can give this to the court reporter as we admit it. And if you'd set it on.
Thank you, Audrey.
Now, is it- So what this- Forgive the dates on this memorandum. It addressed a green sheet in April for the public hearing. At that time, city council took no action. What this does is provide, because this is a public hearing, it provides a background or a framework to handle the public hearing. It is different than some of your other public hearings, so I wanted to go through a process. The recommended time that has been provided to Ms. Montgomery is 30 minutes to explain her petition, and this includes her statements and her witness, which is the planner, Dave DePue. If she needs additional time, she can request council, and council can grant it. The next person who should be providing guidance would be David Theriak, who is the city's special land use council, who then has opportunity to provide guidance as to an overview of the contraction process, and then specifically as to this particular application and petition. Other city staff is present and available to answer any questions by city council. And then each party should be given a rebuttal period, as well as the public should have an opportunity to provide, you know, any input if they so desire. This is not necessarily your final action that you can be taken. You have two choices. You can either decide to go forward and contract the parcel, at which point we, the city attorney would prepare additional ordinances to then be scheduled for the contraction process. If the information is not adequate for your consideration, for consideration of your decision, or you disagree, you can also authorize the city attorney, with, again, assistance of outside counsel, to prepare a resolution that would set forth the findings and basis for any additional direction by council, or if council is ready to take final action, to deny the request, if that's city council's decision. And city council can continue the case or provide alternative direction. And no matter what occurs, it, this is not an item that is time barred, where you have to provide a petition to contract, that you can never provide it again, or you have to wait out several years, so we can, you know, continue receiving this. She has a right to file petitions to contract whenever so desired. At this point, Ms. Montgomery, if you'd like to proceed? Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, Neil Montgomery, representing BG Mine LLC. We're here in regards to a parcel of property that's 1,268 acres, and it's located in sections 10, 17, and 20, I'm sorry, County 47 South, Ring 26 East. I do want to kind of note that I am dismayed that even though I filed the petition, I was not provided actual notice of any sort, or just fortunate enough to read the agenda and know that the item was on here. I don't think that that's professional, and it's unfortunate. We need to give you a little history, so you understand how we get to where we are today. The property was annexed in 2003. Your land development code requires anyone annexing voluntarily into the city to execute an annexation agreement, and that was done in this case. And that annexation agreement indicated a lot of things. One, that the city would undertake the studies required by the city's comprehensive plan regarding properties in what's called the DRGR, and based on those studies, the city would follow its comprehensive plan and make amendments to your comprehensive plan based on those studies. The city has undertaken several studies, and Mr. DePue will elaborate on those, but as of yet, the city has failed to follow the mandatory language of your comprehensive plan and make any amendments to your comprehensive plan regarding this property. So as of this date, the property has no reasonable use. One might suggest whether or not the property owner had reason to believe that the city would make amendments, and the answer is yes. They did, because there are specific policies that indicate that you're going to do the studies, you're going to make the amendments. I want to just let you know, because I'm not sure if everyone in the city knows, what's the genesis or the origin of the DRGR land use category. That's a category that's a county category. It was created by virtue of a settlement agreement with the then Department of Community Affairs. The DR stands for density reduction. That was based on a rule, 9J5, that required a needs analysis. That rule no longer exists. It was eliminated in 2011, and so that's no longer a requirement. So that's no longer a basis for that particular category. The other part was GR, which was groundwater resources. At the time the county entered into the settlement agreement, there was no requirement for tying planning to water supply. Since that time, the legislature has changed the rules, and the water management districts now do water supply plans. And the legislation has been changed to require local governments to amend their comprehensive plan to include the data and information from the water supply plan. The city has failed to keep its comp plan consistent with the water supply plan. The Water Management District is just about ready to adopt the update for the Lower West Coast Water Supply Plan. That would be the water supply plan that applies to the City of Benita Springs. So one would expect, if the city's going to comply with 163, that you would update your comp plan based on that water supply plan. But in those water supply plan, the property in question is not needed for groundwater resources. So the DRGR from, that you borrowed from the county, doesn't really apply. And the reason why the city was going to do a study was because they knew, when you did your original comprehensive plan, and there was discussion about it, that the city needed to undertake and have an updated analysis to determine whether that was appropriate in the city. In the annexation agreement, the city agreed that if they didn't undertake those amendments required by the comprehensive plan, that the city would use best efforts to de-annex or contract the property. In April of this year, I sent a letter pursuant to that annexation agreement to the city and said, please use those best efforts and de-annex or contract this property, since the city has failed to undertake the amendments required by both the annexation agreement and your comprehensive plan. Then the question you would have is, is this property appropriate for contraction? The Florida statutes in section 171.052 says, in order to contract, one has to meet, one has to fail to meet the annexation criteria set forth in section 171.043. That particular section of the statute says, if you don't have, you know, enough people or a variety of things, if the character of the property doesn't meet that statutory provision, it shouldn't be annexed, and you have to fail to meet those provisions in order to be contracted or de-annexed. So I'd like at this time for Dr. DePue to provide testimony to you, both on your comprehensive plan, and on the character of this property, and whether or not it does meet or fail to meet the requirements of 171.043. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. DePue, and then I'll return.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David DePue. I'm here representing Benita Grand Mine. I'm a land planner. I have been a planner in this part of Florida since 1980. I'm the former development director for Lee County, and I have been a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners since 1983. So I have background in planning, and that is specifically what I'm here to speak to you about today. I have been involved with the Benita Grand Mine since the late 90s with this particular piece of property, off and on, and have been well a participant in all of the material events that lead us to this day today. As Ms. Montgomery indicated, what I've been tasked with is to take a look at the provisions in the Florida statutes and the factual situation associated with the mine, in order to reach a professional determination with regard to its appropriateness for the de-annexation or contraction process. To that end, we took a look first at 171.021 of the Florida statutes, to look at the purpose of the annexation legislation. And it talks about ensuring sound urban development and accommodation for growth. It talks about ensuring the efficient provision of urban services to areas that have become urban in character, and to ensure that areas are not annexed unless municipal services can be provided. The annexation of the Benita Grand Mine property was voluntary. It was controlled at that time by 171.044, and the annexation findings from that particular section of the statute were somewhat different than what we're looking at tonight. Those annexation findings were twofold. One, is the property reasonably compact? And two, is the property contiguous to the municipality in question? The finding in 2003 was that it met both of those criteria for voluntary annexation. It was reasonably compact. It is contiguous and was contiguous at that time to the municipality of Benita Springs. However, contraction is controlled, as Ms. Montgomery indicated, by section 171.051 and .052. The contraction can only occur if the areas proposed do not meet the criteria found in The contraction cannot create non-contiguous areas. This contraction would not do that. There are no registered voters currently living in the areas in question. The use that is currently being made of the property is rural in nature, it is not urban, and it is entirely non-residential. There are no areas that are separated from the City of Benita Springs by the Benita Grand Mine property, and there are no areas adjacent to the Benita Grand Mine property for which 60% of the external boundary of the mine would be developed as urban landforms at this time. Urban services have not been extended to the Benita Grand Mine property. There are no agreed-upon capital improvement programs that would extend urban services to the property. The property still retains its county land use designation and its county zoning district. During the original annexation of the Benita Grand Mine property, there was a joint agreement between the owners and the City of Benita Springs to make a cooperative effort in determining whether the DRGR classification was appropriate for the site, determining whether the DRGR classification provided any significant hydro-geological benefits for the site and for the city of Benita Springs, and in establishing a new land use designation that would provide for development options, reclamation options, and the cessation of the mining activities that take place on the property, and were taking place then on the property. The record, through my research and through the experience that I had in dealing with the process itself at that time, reflected a clear understanding that both parties to the agreement recognized that redevelopment of the property, reclamation of the property, and the cessation of mining was the ultimate outcome and was desirable in both instances. However, after more than a decade and a half, and a number of studies by the City of Benita Springs, there is no consensus at this point on the way that growth of the Benita Grand Mine property will be accommodated, the type or intensity of growth that is desirable and jointly acceptable to all parties that were a part of the annexation agreement in 2003, how urban services will ultimately be provided to the Benita Grand property, and what parameters will be established to provide those urban services to that property. Both the annexation ordinance and the annexation agreement are anticipatory. They anticipated that activities would be taking place. They were predicated upon actions to be taken by the city in cooperation with the owners that would result in a recognition of the need to create an urban slash suburban development pattern for the Benita Grand Mine property. Creation of that urban and suburban development pattern would have created conditions that would be consistent with the finding that the subject property had developed into the type of land use that was anticipated and was reflective of the statutory requirements for inclusion in municipality. It was anticipated in 2003 that the Benita Grand Mine property would have developed in a fashion that the total residential properties would be not less than two persons per acre for at least 60% of the total acreage, not counting non-residential uses, and consisting of lots of five acres or less in size. This was reflected by the fact that the City of Benita Springs, since that time, has participated in or been aware of or funded a variety of studies and planning efforts, including the 2005 effort by Greg Rawl Engineering Analysis for Properties Designated Within the City of Benita Springs as Density Reduction and Groundwater Resource, the 2008 study by Deleese Fitzgerald Incorporated entitled Benita Springs Density Reduction, Groundwater Resource Land Use Study, the 2013 study by Baracco and Associates Northeast Quadrant Land Use Plan, the Citizens Water Task Force, which was impaneled in 2013, and ultimately delivered a final report in 2014, the Lower West Coast Water Supply Plan, which was updated in 2012. And while every study did not recommend land use recommendations, did not provide you with land use recommendations, all of those that did provide land use recommendations concluded that the uses found in the Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan Policy 1.1.21 were not appropriate for the Benita Grand Mine property. For those studies without specific land use recommendations, the mine owners have committed on multiple occasions that any of the design criteria that were found within those studies would be met with any development activity that would be taking place on the site. In conclusion, the analysis that I undertook suggests that had the annexation agreement provisions been implemented as envisioned at the time the agreement was entered into, the mine property would have begun the process of ceasing operations of the mine, reclamation of the property, and redevelopment of a use that is consistent with the statutory definitions of the urban and suburban development pattern. The studies that were authorized by the city, without exception, indicated that that redevelopment would be an urban suburban land use with the corresponding density and intensity that was appropriate, desirable, and envisioned by the statutory provisions. Failure to act upon the data analysis presented in these studies has created a situation in which the subject property does not meet the standards that are articulated by the statutes to qualify for inclusion within an urban municipality, and it does meet the standards for contractions. The original anticipatory analysis that was associated with the annexation depended on the adoption of reclamation and redevelopment plans, comprehensive plan amendments, and although the voluntary annexation standards were different from those that are currently found in 171.043 and were not met in 2003, the failure to act on these anticipatory changes has created a situation in which the de-annexation of the Benita Grand property, in my professional opinion, is justified and consistent with those statutory provisions. I have, for the record, a memorandum which, I know that was somewhat lengthy, but believe me, the memorandum is longer, and happily I did not read that to you. So I'm going to provide that to the attorneys and for the record, so that you have that as part of the record of the proceedings. Hand that to Mr. Theriak. Thank you all.
Thank you.
And I believe Ms. Montgomery has some concluding remarks.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. It's my understanding that in this type of proceeding, that you allow cross-examination of witnesses. Is that correct?
Audrey?
Yes, this-
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I have several questions of Dr. DePue, if that's appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. DePue.
Good evening.
It's good to see you again. I know we're both watching a hurricane heading up towards Tallahassee.
We certainly are.
Isn't it true that under Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes, that the decision whether to de-annex or contract by a municipality is discretionary?
I believe that calls for a legal conclusion. I object.
You may object. He's provided a lot of legal conclusions today, so do you know, sir?
In the sense that it is something that the city council decides, I believe that is correct. Yes, sir.
But they're not obligated to de-annex. Isn't that true?
I'm not sure what you mean by obligated.
You can't stand here tonight and tell the mayor and the council members that they are legally obligated to de-annex the BG mine. Isn't that true?
One, I'm going to object for the record again. That calls for a legal conclusion. And secondly, your question isn't clear. You were asking him about under 171, and there are two things in play here, Chapter 171 as well as the annexation agreement. So when you ask that question, to which are you referring so he can properly answer?
Actually, I disagree. Your petition that you filed, it's an amended petition dated February 2nd, 2017. No, I'm actually reading the first one, both the amended and the original. Expressly state that the petition that you submitted is pursuant to the requirements of Chapter 171 Florida statutes. There is no reference to the annexation agreement. The annexation agreement is not part of this proceeding. This proceeding is limited to 171. I'm asking Dr. DePue that pursuant to Chapter 171, isn't it true that the city council has a discretion and not an obligation to de-annex?
From the standpoint of answering your question as a planner and not providing a legal conclusion, I would tell you that my analysis dealt solely with whether or not the property itself complied with the criteria of 171.043 in order to determine whether or not, under the provisions of 171.051 through 052, it was qualified for de-annexation. My conclusion is that it does meet those criteria for de-annexation and that it does not qualify for the provisions that are mentioned in 171.043. I did not study whether this was obligatory or discretionary. That wasn't part of the scope of my work.
Okay, great. Thank you. I believe Ms. Montgomery indicated the property has no reasonable use. Isn't it true that the property is currently being mined?
The property is currently being mined, yes, sir.
Do you know what's being mined?
Lime rock.
Do you know what volumes?
I do not.
When's the last time you were on the property?
Probably about, I want to say about six months ago.
All right. Did you personally observe mining activities taking place when you were on the property?
Yes, sir.
Do you know whether the applicant has requested an extension of time in order to continue mining on the property?
They have.
Do you know whether the applicant, or excuse me, the property owner is losing or making a profit with its mining activities on the property?
I do not.
Have you ever heard of the term an industrial PD?
Yes, sir.
What is that, sir?
Industrial PD is a planned development that has industrial uses. That is what the current property is owned, IPD.
All right. So you would agree with me, then, that there's an industrial use on the property?
Yes, sir.
Could you read Section 171.031 subsection 10 from the Florida statutes, please?
Urban purposes means that land is used intensively for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and governmental purposes, including any parcels of land in their natural state or kept free of development as dedicated green belt areas.
Would you agree with me, sir, as a planner, that pursuant to the definition of urban purpose, that the use of the property for industrial uses constitutes an urban purpose pursuant to that definition?
No, sir, I would not. Because the Department of Community Affairs has already ruled that lime rock mining is not urban in nature.
Who did that, sir?
The Department of Community Affairs.
Right. The Department of Community Affairs is a state agency?
It was formerly a state agency. It's currently the Department of Economic Opportunity.
And the Department of Economic Opportunity doesn't write Florida laws, do they?
No, sir, but they-
And they wouldn't have the ability to dictate how a statutory term in 171 is construed, correct?
They would not.
Thank you. You indicated that there were several studies. Isn't it true that the city council did not formally accept or approve any of the studies that you identified tonight?
I believe that is correct.
Isn't it also true that the annexation agreement that was executed by the city and the BG mine predecessor did not guarantee a particular density or intensity?
That is correct.
How many registered voters are on the property?
In terms of residents, none.
Ms. Montgomery talked about the history of the DRGR. Isn't it also true that part of Lee County's concerns with the area that was designated DRGR was to address urban sprawl?
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Corey Lee.
Thank you.
I think I have more questions.
Yes, thank you. Mr. DePue, have you worked on, was this property approved as an IPD under the county regulations?
Yes, ma'am.
And the county comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am.
And is the property still under the county regulations and the county comprehensive plan?
Yes, ma'am.
And mining IPDs in Lee County are located, since you've done them all, I think, where?
In rural areas.
And in your professional and expert opinion, is this a rural area?
Yes, ma'am.
Does this property have any of what you would typically call urban characteristics or appear to be part of a municipality?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay. Audrey?
I'm sorry. When I commented to DePue, I said I would come back to conclude, so I'm back to conclude with your indulgence.
Do you want to conclude at this time or do a rebuttal?
Well, I'm going to do rebuttal, but I want to-
So this is conclusion, and then you'll do another conclusion during rebuttal after?
Well, yes, because I have no idea what you folks are going to say, so I need to have rebuttal to whatever the city presents.
Okay.
Thank you. The city has had 13 years plus to put this property in a city comprehensive plan category, and the city has failed to do so. The city, in fact, in your recent amendment, simply acknowledged the fact that annexed properties would just be under county categories and county rules until some future date. That's not specified. The city also did a draft amendment where they said regardless of the studies, the property should remain as it is. Now, that didn't proceed forward based on direction from Mr. Theriault, but it does indicate a clear intention that this property is not going to be converted to any type of urban use. And the city agreed that if they didn't amend the comprehensive plan, that the property could contract or de-annex, and that's what the property owner is asking the city to do, to recognize that the property is rural and that the city has not undertaken those things that it promised to do, and that the property, because it does not meet the criteria of 171.043, should be returned to the unincorporated area of Lee County.
I believe it's my turn, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions of Ms. Montgomery.
Counsel? Okay.
One second, Mr. Mayor, please. All right. I'll call Dr. David DePue, because I should have asked him one other question, but it wasn't raised in Ms. Montgomery's direct, so I need to bring him back. Dr. DePue, if you would please approach.
Just as a personal request, can I ask Mr. Theriault to please speak into the microphone so those of us who are here in the pair can hear? I want to make sure I-
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, I thought I was. I apologize. In fact, I'm going to stand up next to Dr. DePue, if that's all right.
That's okay.
Dr. DePue, I'm handing you a copy of, let me read, state in the mic. We'll share the mic. Looks to be a voluntary annexation agreement petition prepared by Morris DePue, March 28th, 2003. Do you recognize that document?
I do, yes, sir.
Did you prepare that document?
I did, yes, sir.
And let me turn you to page 6. There's a heading, "Future Land Use," and then you quote GOI1, and then there's a sentence right after your quote on GOI1. Do you see where I'm at, sir? Starts off with a sentence, "The annexation of the subject property."
I do.
Would you please read that sentence into the record?
States, "The annexation of the subject property provides for a mechanism to eliminate the mining and industrial uses on the subject property, promoting compatibility and a high quality of life for the city's residents adjoining the subject property."
So when you filed this report in '03, you admitted that mining was an industrial use.
In the sense that the uses on the property itself engaged in industrial activities, it was. The industrial IPD or the industrial planned development that is designated on the property is the only mechanism that Lee County had at the time to permit mining activities of this nature, so-
Excuse me, Dr. DePue, that was a yes or a no.
I answered that, and I'm now explaining my answer.
I don't need you to explain.
Well, I'm sorry. My understanding is the witnesses get to explain their answers. So if you're saying I don't get to do that, you need to make sure you let me know.
I will object for the record. If you're going to ask a witness a question, the witness needs to be entitled to provide a complete answer.
Not when it's a yes or a no. Yes or no is complete. I didn't ask for his explanation after the yes or no. Thank you, sir. I'd like to introduce the 2003 voluntary annexation agreement petition as city staff's first exhibit.
You got any more for me?
No, I'm throwing it to you right now. Ms. Montgomery might have some more. May I introduce that to the record, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah, I heard, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want me to pass?
Yes.
I can do it. And Neil, I'm going to hand you two documents as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. One is a copy of Part 1, Chapter 171, Florida statutes. I've highlighted a few provisions throughout just to make it easier to get to it. I've also provided you with a copy of a memo that I drafted on April 5th when we were originally going to conduct this hearing. It's staff's position that as a threshold matter, and let me turn you to the right section here. And, Mr. Mayor, while I'm doing this, may I introduce these two documents as city staff's exhibits, 2 and 3? 2 would be the Chapter 171, and 3 would be my memorandum?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. It's staff's position, Mr. Mayor and council members, that if you turn to Section 171.051, which is on page 1774, that there are two procedures for contraction or de-annexation. Those are two different words that mean the same thing, which is removing property that's in the city from the city and placing it back into the county. The first process is subsection 1, and it states that the governing body shall by ordinance propose the contraction of municipal boundaries. That gives the city council the legal authority to say, "We don't want to have a piece of property. We're going to initiate an ordinance." The second prong is number 2. A petition of 15 percent of the qualified voters in an area desiring to be excluded from the municipal boundaries filed with the clerk of the municipal governing body may propose such an ordinance. The key here is a petition of 15 percent of the qualified voters in the area desiring to be excluded. Here, the area desiring to be excluded is the BG mine property, 1,200 some odd acres. The phrase "qualified voters" is on your first page. It's under 171.031 subsection 6. Qualified voter means any person registered to vote in accordance with law. The testimony is unrefuted from Dr. DePue that there are no voters. In fact, the petition that was filed by Ms. Montgomery on behalf of BG mine stated that there were no registered voters, and a corporate entity is not a registered voter. Corporations don't vote. So it is staff's position that this petition as a matter of law is legally insufficient because there is not a petition that has been filed by 15 percent of the qualified voters. They're attempting to use an option that is limited to folks that represent 15 percent of the area. They don't. So it's our position that this petition as a matter of law should be denied. Alternatively, it's our position that even if this petition were appropriate, and we don't believe it is appropriate, there are those only two prongs for bringing a de-annexation process, neither of which have been properly invoked here. But even if there were, you have absolute discretion on whether to de-annex or not. The statute states "may." It's not "shall." So even if the applicant, the property owner, is correct that the criteria that Dr. DePue reviewed, assuming he's correct, are applicable, you're still not obligated to de-annex. There's nothing in 171 that states that if a property owner demonstrates that those criteria are met, that a city has a legal obligation to de-annex. So you have the absolute discretion tonight to say yes or to say no. It's also staff's position that tonight has been a bit of a red herring. The petition, the amended petition specifically stated that the petition and the amended petition were being brought pursuant to Section 171 Florida statutes. There's nothing in the petition or the amended petition that states that they were being brought pursuant to some alleged breach of the annexation agreement. It's completely silent on that issue. What's before you tonight is solely whether this is an appropriate petition pursuant to 171, and whether pursuant to Chapter 171, you desire as a council to de-annex property. So I would respectfully submit that the testimony regarding the intent of DRGR, the testimony regarding the intent of the annexation agreement, the testimony regarding the reports that Dr. DePue candidly acknowledged were not approved and accepted by the city council, none of that matters for a 171 de-annexation proceeding. So we would recommend that the city council deny this petition as being legally sufficient, and if you don't deny it as being legally sufficient, then you have the discretion to decide whether you want to de-annex or not. You don't have an obligation to do so. Thank you.
Good evening.
I would ask you, if you would, since Mr. Theriault has kindly passed out 171, to ask you to turn to 171.043, and that's the criteria for annexation. And if you look at page 1773 at the upper left-hand corner, you'll see that you either had to meet subsection 2 or subsection 3. And subsection 2 says you have to have a resident population, and it defines what that is. In this instance, you annexed property that didn't have people, and so now you're going And so now you're going to say, "We can't contract because there's no people and there's no qualified voters." I would submit that you can't deprive a property owner of the ability to come in and contract because you failed to follow the law in the first place. Therefore, I would submit that you can legally contract this property, and not only can you, you should.
The only thing I would briefly respond, Mr. Mayor, again, David Theriac representing the city staff, is Miss Montgomery has not addressed the fact that the statute clearly indicates that you need 15% of the qualified voters, and there are none, and therefore subsection 2 of 171.051 does not apply. And also does not address the fact that under the criteria for contraction in 171.052 states "may be proposed for exclusion," does not state that a local government is obligated to contract or de-annex, even if the criteria that Miss Montgomery is pointing to in Section 171.043, sub 1, 2, and 3 apply. I also find it somewhat telling that part of Miss Montgomery's argument is that you illegally annexed it in the first place, but that was based upon mis, based upon representations by Dr. Depew that it was appropriate to annex the property. So they can't have it both ways. Thank you.
Audrey?
At this time, if you have any questions of the petitioner of Mr. Theriac or even staff, you may do so at this time, otherwise you may deliberate, and once you deliberate, I can provide you some guidance, or you can look at the green sheet with the staff recommendations, which is you can either provide us with direction regarding whether to proceed with an ordinance to contract the property, accepting the petition, or alternatively, you may reject the petition and then authorize the city attorney to prepare a resolution with the factual basis for council's decision to reject. Or if you need additional information, continue the hearing, we can do that also.
Counsel?
I make, I make a motion to reject.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to reject. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Only to say that, sorry, Audrey?
With the point of order that you're providing me, based on the information that was provided, to come up with a resolution for a factual basis for your decision as to the rejection.
Including the points about its legal insufficiency.
Absolutely.
I amend my motion.
Okay. Been amended, and is there a second? A second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilman Karamba?
Aye.
Okay.
And I do want to apologize on the record to Miss Montgomery. I had thought the October 4th, she did receive notice. I realized it was the September 20th and September 6th. What happened was we had a series of problems in September, including personal problems, availability of witnesses because of the hurricane, as well as special counsel, and certainly the hurricane creating some problems where it was bumped two weeks. And I noticed I had given her confirmation for September 20th. I had thought I had given her for October 4th, and I did not, so I do apologize. If public wanted to be entertained, I think the hearing's concluded. I don't see where the...
Do you want a public comment?
If you wish to take it, yes, sir.
Sure. Any member of the public that'd like to speak on this, please come forward.
Change your mind.
It's a little late, thank you. Rick Steinmeyer.
Okay.
It's a shame that they've gone, but still, John West for the record. 1984 was when the DRGR was instituted by Lee County, was it?
No.
When?
19, started in, the process started in 1989, it was concluded in 1990.
Okay, well, it was a long time ago. At that, it was not long after that that Lee County started approving projects on an overlay basis in the DRGR. The people in Benita Springs at that time had no say. They could probably have gone to Lee County, to the meetings there, but they didn't object to it. We have different problems now in Benita Springs, and I don't know if they heard about it, but we have flooding here. And the fact that they've had to wait 13 years, sorry, but we've got problems here that we need to resolve. And giving, allowing them to leave their zoning here and go to Lee County is not going to help at all, their situation here with the flooding. If Lee County were to give them an approval for 2,000 houses, there will be hell to pay here in Benita Springs because we're going to suffer from the effects of it. Bella Terra was approved on an overlay basis in the DRGR in 2001. It took 20 years for that project to go through, and in the meantime, there was a mine that was set up next to it on about 400 acres or 500 acres. That mine was put in by Mr. Youngquist, and he had a plan from the beginning and an understanding that he would put 500 houses, I think it was 500, in an area around the lake that he built there. 10 years, he upped and left and sold the property to, I think, one of the developers. They put the 500 houses there, done. I'm just telling you a bit of history. I think, I think that you did the right thing, and we should fight to the end for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Lo and behold, I guess we're going to move on to public comment now. Members of the public that'd like to speak on any other item, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Robert Allen?
Good evening, Mayor.
City council members? I want to thank you for your help in obtaining the permit through water management. I hope that in the future we have an easier way to proceed with getting a permit prior to reaching an emergency state, because that's something that we need due to our topography. I appreciate the accessibility to all the city officials that I've been given. I think that's one of the pluses in being in a small community. Regarding the study that Mr. Beeb is going to do, I was going to recommend that there be a town hall where citizens can have some input to the study, but then Councilman Ford said that that would take place, so that's good, too. But I also hope that we're brought along with what's going on. I think in light of what's happened, I think that there is a renewed interest in how the water flows and what we intend to do, and I think more people that are brought on board will be helpful to all of us in the end. At the last meeting, which was the 26th, I remember that date because it was the 22nd that I got power back, Councilman DeWitt suggested or recommended that some of the money for the quadrant study be moved over to a stronger effort in taking care of the flooding situation, so I just want to know that. I appreciate and agree with that. I had some other comments that I want to talk about, which was the communication that took place during the storm. It took me a while to get out of Morton Grove, but when I finally got out, I went down to the dog track, and I was able to get some water down there. There was a traffic situation down there, then I talked to one of the National Guard members, and I said, "We've got a problem down here with people coming and going. Somebody needs to come down and direct some traffic." And his reply was, "We're not allowed to go beyond this area here." So I said, "Well, okay, is there somebody here from the city?" He says, "No." So I walked around just to confirm that, and there wasn't. The reason I wanted to go down there not only was for water, I was slogging around in water for weeks in my boots and getting bit by those red ants, I forget what it, fire ants, and they leave a nasty bite, and they, you know, easy to get infected. So I was hoping I was going to find maybe a medic down there, or a nurse, or a representative from the city. I had some real concerns about, you know, maybe getting infected or tetanus, so I was disappointed that there wasn't anybody down there. So looking forward, when we have some area where we're going for assistance, whether it be water or something like that, I think that it's, it's a good idea to have a representative from the city there, and we're making the city have somebody there for minor wounds and cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Good evening, Bobby.
Hello. My name is Bobby Byrd. I'm a resident of Benita Springs, and I'm coming here tonight to give you kind of a heads up. We have a local musician who came to me, you've probably all heard her, she's done several events for us here in the city, who came to me a week and a half ago and said, "Bobby, I want to do a benefit concert for the victims of Irma in our area." So I said, "Well, yeah." And she said, you know, she wanted to do it at Riverside Park because we have the best venue. And I said, "What can I do to help?" So we're partnering with her through Rotary, and all of the musicians are donating their time. All of the funds raised, all of the proceeds will be going to help victims of Irma, not only in Benita Springs, but also Everglade City, Marco, and other places amokally that have been hit and really suffered a lot. So at this point, I just wanted to let you know that we're planning this, so just to give you a heads up, because it's going to come before you shortly, and also to introduce you to Sarah so you can hear it from her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, just really quick, I just was trying to come up with a way to give back to the community, and I think that there's no better way than to use what I know, so, and, which is music and spreading love and trying to uplift the community. So I'm really looking forward to the opportunity of having an event at Riverside Park. I've played at Riverside Park so many times, probably, I don't know, 15 maybe, something crazy like that. So I just think that it'll be an amazing opportunity for the entire community to give back, so. And I know that a lot of people are looking forward to it. I have a large roster of musicians who would love to join and are donating their time, as Bobby said, 100%, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeyer, those of you that have not read the Benita Banner today, there's a fabulous, heartwarming article about the people, all the different people that are helping Benita out. It's absolutely heartwarming. There's gazillions of people, and it makes me proud to be an American and especially a Benitian. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rick. Hi, Kathy.
Good evening, for the record, Kathy McGrath, and I'm just repeating everything that Bobby said, and of course, we've seen Sarah before, she's wonderful. The one thing Bobby forgot to tell you is the date, and it's going to be coming for you, in front of you again. It's Friday, October 27th, so I know you'll support it. It's for a great cause, thanks.
Okay, thank you. John?
John West again. I noticed there was a court reporter here. Is that going to be standard practice?
Probably if we receive petitions to contract, but we are also under litigation, it probably will, but it was ordered by the applicant.
Okay, because I just want to mention that in the minutes of the 20th of September, it says there that, I made the comment that I wanted to have a Water Task Force Committee instituted. I never said anything like it, and I'd like that to be expunged. I discussed communications during the storm, nothing about Water Task Force. So can that be, I know it's unusual for someone from the public, but we're here to listen and to talk, and it must make sense. Okay?
Thank you. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing none? City attorneys report.
I really don't have anything unless you have questions of me.
Counsel?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. City managers report. Carl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've already taken care of Item A, and Arlene will be taking care of Item B.
Good evening. Before you, you will see that we have received correspondence from the recreational trails program, RTP, which we did receive award for. There is an email correspondence to our Public Works Director requesting that we provide positive confirmation, that we wish to continue with the grant process as in the wake of Irma, they are asking all of the award recipients to provide that confirmation. So we would be looking for direction in the form of a motion that we can reply that back to, back to the app.
So moved.
Okay. Second. And a motion and a second? Further discussion?
Only to say that, in the words of General McAuliffe at the Battle of Bollocks, "Nuts."
Roll call, please.
Councilman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Plin?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilman Karamba?
Great.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye, sorry.
Unanimous, thank you. Thanks, Greg.
Additionally, you'll see this evening, you have in front of you a couple of documents. One is, you'll see, the Joint Unified Local Mitigation Strategy, which we highlighted city of Benita Springs, and you'll see that there's five projects there. Also, we provided you a copy with the FEMA fact sheet, as well as a summary of a program. Margaret Wersell with the Regional Planning Council has been very diligent at looking at any opportunities that might be of assistance to the city, especially during our flood, flooding situation, and she did come across a grant application, that is an annual FEMA grant application, that is actually due this Monday. The grant application is for specific projects that are identified in a local mitigation strategy, LMS. The city does not have our own local mitigation strategy, but we are a part of Lee County's, which is completely appropriate and is actually part of the points received for our community rating system. In reviewing, pulling that document down and looking at it, these are the five projects that are identified. I did ask our Public Works Director to prioritize those five if he had his opportunity to do so, because there is a $4 million cap on what could be received in grant awards. And he did select as the first priority Spring Creek Rail Road, ROW, RCP, replacement pipes for the east side to West Side Ditch, which is $2.5, $2,500,000. Priority number two would be the Mar-a-Largo Lane Culvert South Branch, $650,000. In, also in reviewing this, we did reach out by telephone today, myself and the Public Works Director, to Lee County EOC office to find out when, as soon as possible, we could reopen the Lee County LMI to include additional projects, especially since we'll be having the report that was just approved this evening. We'll want to make sure that any identified projects are included in this LMS for this grant, as well as any other grant opportunities that might bring themselves forward. This grant program through FEMA is an annual grant program. It is not related to the Irma Disaster Fund and other grant programs we're going to receive. I understand that we'll be able to work through the county with the This grant program through FEMA is an annual grant program. It is not related to the Irma Disaster Fund and other grant programs we're gonna receive. I understand that we'll be able to work through the county with the funding of the hazard mitigation grant programs. This is specifically for pre-disaster mitigation, PDM grant funds. It is an annual program, so we can apply each year. Margaret Wersell did pull down the grant application. She started taking a look at it and she said it is feasible for them to turn in an application on Monday by 5:00, if the council wishes to pursue one of these. I did also want to mention, make clear that it is a matching grant process, so it would require a match from the local jurisdiction of 25% of the total cost of the projects. So if we did try to pursue the $2,500,000 and also try to pursue the $650,000 project, there would be a, that would be looking at a potential grant of $3,750,000. There would be a local match of $787,500. If we only went for one project, the $2,500,000 project, there would be a local match required of $625,000. We would need to bring forward, we would not be, have another opportunity for another council meeting before this, so we'd have to forward you all a copy of the application prior to the submittal on Monday. This is just an option that was brought forward as a potential project. We do recognize that we need to try to work as quickly as possible to open up that LMI and add more projects to it.
Counsel?
I'm a little confused, but, so, so Margaret is saying by Monday, we can submit one project? Is that?
She's actually saying we could possibly submit two projects. It's a total of 4 million.
All right, fine. So, no, I got that, thank you. And so, but what does that relate to? Is this also anything, or this is just, these are among the projects that have been previously put in by, I guess it was Frank Cassidy at the time?
So we have five projects total that are in the Lee County Local Mitigation Strategy.
Okay.
In order to qualify for this particular grant, the FEMA-
The one Margaret-
Margaret has found.
Okay.
It has to be identified in the jurisdiction's local mitigation strategy.
Right.
The City of Benita Springs does not have our own local mitigation strategy, nor is it recommended that we do so, because we receive those points through Lee County for the community rating system.
Okay, so in other words, thank you. So now I have, so I think I have it. In other words, what we would file for by Monday would have to be off this list?
Correct.
Or you said you asked a question of somebody and they said we could add to the list or not?
So what we-
I know it's tight, but-
Well, no, we, yes. We approached, so, so to be clear, the local mitigation strategy is approved by both the City Council through a resolution and the Lee County Board of Commissioners. There is a resolution we have on record, so we could use that as recognition for the grant. We have asked the Lee County EOC to have us open that local mitigation strategy as soon as possible to add more projects. That would not be possible by Monday.
Oh, okay.
Because it would have to be approved by both the City Council-
And Lee County.
-the Lee County Board of Commissioners and all the other jurisdictions that are part of that plan, which is City EOC. We can send out the link to local mitigation. It's got all the jurisdictions.
So this is what we're working with?
This is all we have at this time. Hopefully, as soon as we can open the local mitigation strategy to provide more projects, we can go after additional grants. We can also go next year after, this is an annual grant.
All right.
It was just an opportunity that came forward, but we wanted to make clear that there was a local match of the 25%, and if that's a consideration and if it's of interest.
Can I just ask Matt, or, so I mean, I guess these are out of the Spring Creek thing, but I mean, these look like, the last two are also out of the 2009 update to the Lee County Watershed Plan. And it's a matter of opening those culverts, the one culvert under the railroad track and I wasn't familiar with the one in Mar-a-Lago Lane. Sorry, but the only thing I would say is, this presumes, doesn't it, that we've got an inflow of water coming in from the old Spring Creek headwaters, which is, I mean, there's not a lot of water coming through here now, or am I wrong?
Matt Feeny, Public Works Director, for the record. Those projects did come directly from Jim Beaver's work with the Spring Creek Restoration Plan. That's where they came from. They are essentially creating more capacity in, Mar-a-Lago is near Pueblo Benito.
Right.
So they're just creating more capacity downstream. Yes, ultimately, ideally, the watershed would be connected with greater, greater flow, greater volume coming from underneath the interstate. That is not in those list of projects there. But these projects would need to be accomplished before you could make that connection and would provide benefit in times of high periods of rainfall currently. So they would allow the water to get out of those areas, particularly along Imperial Harbor quicker and into the estuarine, estuarine part of Spring Creek, where it can dissipate and spread out amongst the mangroves. So even absent having the, you know, the whole project plumbed, so to speak, larger, that there would be a benefit in the immediate.
But it does assume a solution to the whole San Carlos issue, right? Because that's where that water would come through.
Yes, ultimately.
What I'm getting at is if that's not solved, we could end up spending money for this piping and have it be extra capacity that's not used. I mean, there's no way to know. Is that fair or not?
It's, it's fair, but we have seen in these storm events, the, the most recent two storm events, the water has stacked up into, in particular, Imperial Harbor. And so this would help that water get out of there. So there would be a benefit.
Okay.
Absent, but it really does presuppose more water coming from the east, yes.
Fred?
Yeah, and the other problem, regretfully, to the north, there is a development that's almost approved, that probably will be throwing water that'll eventually go right down into the Spring Creek area, which goes into the Spring Creek. And it's, unfortunately, it's not inside the city, but if it gets approved, there's 1,800 homes roughly, or 17 under one or the other. So I, I think, I think we ought to go ahead and tell Margaret to put in the one and two, comes up to not quite 4 million.
But it's gonna cost us, how much did you say?
$787,500 is a match.
Matt, which ones are most beneficial? Are we, we're looking at, well, there's three highlighted, but-
Oh, so there was three highlighted, the ones, and then if we needed to go to the 4 million, the 4 million dollar requirement, there was recommended the 2,500,000, which is Spring Creek Railroad.
Railroad right away and-
And then number two would be the $650,000 Spring Creek Mar-a-Lago Lane.
Mar-a-Lago.
Mar-a-Lago Lane.
So, well, the $650,000 one, that's the one where it's coming out right by the circle in Pueblo Benito?
Yes.
So it'd just be increasing the culvert size or?
Yes.
Okay, well, and so, what I'm guessing, I'm looking at it, and the other one's also the railroad right away, so they're both on the eastern side. The other one that's highlighted is the FPL right away, which is on the western side. Is that big enough to handle the capacity that we would increase on these other two? Because anything that comes through these two that we were thinking about doing, has to then go through the FPL one.
You have to ultimately increase all of them. This is, these two seem to be beneficial in the immediate, but you would have, to your point, everything has to be upsized.
We can't put in for all three, you're saying they're limited to 4 million?
There's a 4 million dollar cap for them.
Yeah, it'd be 4.65 if we did all three. But, but water's gonna go downstream, and so the FPL one is further downstream, so we're not gonna cause another problem by increasing capacity and then still having it restricted.
Ultimately, you have to fix every, not fix, but increase capacity in every bit of this link, linked chain. If you think of each one of these constrictions or culverts as a link in a, in a chain, you've got to increase capacity in each one of them to move it downstream. And then to Councilman O'Flynn's point, then move more water from underneath the interstate into that system to bleed any pressure off of the, you know, the Imperial system downstream.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't leaving a bottleneck further downstream, wasn't gonna-
It will. I'm not gonna sit here and tell you it won't.
But I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't we start downstream then and work our way upstream, just so we're not leaving a bottleneck down there?
Doesn't end up to 4 million.
Well, I mean, all three are over 4 million, but if you did the, the two, you know, starting from west to east. And I'm, I'm just asking, so.
I would start further east, because it's where we've seen some of the issues in Imperial Harbor.
The only thing I would add is, and I think this is good, it is, this was suggestion nine in the Water Management District's '09 update. So that has a lot of oomph to it. I mean, it says enlargement of the culverts downstream of Old 41 in the Spring Creek tributary that receive flows from the Mariah Weir, capacity of downstream culverts at the railroad, FPL, et cetera. So it's, it's tracking that, which has got to help the application.
Fred?
Well, I think Matt nailed it correctly. If the other two are approved by de facto, we are actually gonna do the third one, because if you don't, then you're gonna get water jamming up down there from this, more water that we've created the possibility to go through with the larger comp. But I don't see that as a problem, right? Because if we have to do it, we'll figure out a way to do it. Maybe we can be like the feds and print money or something.
Yeah. I would move to approve if-
Do approve, is there a second?
I'll second for the discussion.
And further discussion?
No, I, I'm all for it, kind of what Fred was saying is, and I think Arlene said it, this is a yearly grant, we can always put in for the second part of it next year. I mean, even if we get this grant this year, I don't think all the work can be completed in one year, so just cross our fingers and hopefully don't have another hurricane that backs it up, but at least we're working towards a solution.
Great.
At least on the Spring Creek. Yeah, my other question is, is looking at this, it says it's gonna have benefit to the villages also. Is there any way of asking the village between here and Monday if they can pony up and help with some of that money? Because if you look on, well, when it talks about the joint local mitigation, it says, under where it says City of Benita Springs presenter Frank Cassidy feeding the Spring Creek into the northern section of Benita Springs going into Lee County and the villages of Estero.
Right.
I'm just wondering if, I mean, essentially, it's gonna go through the brooks, come in through Spring Creek, I wonder if they can-
I don't think so. I agree it says that, but I think-
So, I'm just reading, I'm just going with what I read, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if they can help out with some of it, if they're gonna get some of the benefit with the flowway downstream.
Probably, they closed all the culverts in '09. They should.
Arlene?
Staff would just ask, should you decide to move forward the grant that we allow, we permitted to have the mayor execute any documents, as we don't have another council meeting in between and we can retroactively bring that back to the next council meeting for a final adoption?
And we'll check in with Estero.
I amend my motion to say that.
Okay. Okay, with the amendment as a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman McRumba?
Aye.
Councilman DeWitt?
Aye.
Councilman Slacta?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna pick up with Item C, which is the Wonder Gardens Workshop. It was a joint workshop scheduled between the City Council and the Board of Directors of the Wonder Gardens. It was scheduled for October 10th. It was predicated on that date based upon an understanding that they were going to, number one, do some reformulation of their board members, number one, and also, number two, on September 15th, they were going to hold a retreat for themselves. Irma came along and they did not hold that retreat. So it's my recommendation, and I think we may have already done this, but that, that October 10th joint meeting needs to be canceled and rescheduled. I will tell you that the Board of Directors of the Wonder Gardens have their retreat rescheduled for October 25th. So if it pleased the council, we could cancel, cancel the October 10th joint meeting and perhaps look to reschedule it in November, if that's okay with council.
Sounds like a plan.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we will do that. Also, I want to call your attention then to, it is Item D, but it is the errata sheet that we put forward today. And I apologize for the lateness of this errata sheet, but we are, as we've talked earlier in the evening, we are on a timeframe that is unbelievable with regards to the state legislature. On October 9th, the Select Committee for, the legislature for Hurricane Irma will be meeting for the first time. And then by October 19th, there will be a legislative delegation meeting, which is an annual meeting, but this time, instead of being in December, it's in October. So-
Did that just get moved up?
Did what get moved up?
Did that meeting to October 19th?
I don't know when it was exactly scheduled, but it's, I think sometimes the, the meeting gets pushed off on election years or some other reason why they get moved around. But this is an October 19th delegation meeting. What, what we have supplied is we've taken a look at, first off, we changed-
You know what time that is, Carl?
No, sir, I don't have that right now.
All day.
Well, it normally starts at like, pretty early, like nine or ten.
Nine or 10.
Nine or 10. And runs all day, but the municipalities normally get up there pretty early, usually within the first hour, hour and a half, so, on that date. So anyway, first thing is your legislative priorities list. We did make the addition of the flooding reduction and mitigation as being number one. We added, we, we left the rest of them the same, or took off those items that you didn't want on there anymore. And then on the back of this is a list of proposed projects. We have not prioritized these projects, and we have not put a dollar amount to that, to any of these projects. And Matt's here to talk about any of these that you want, but we're thinking that, given the timeframe, we would love to have some direction to council, from council, as to what direction you would like to go with these, what priority you might like, what we should work on and put in requests for. Again, like I said earlier tonight, I really hate to miss the opportunity for a dollar ask, at least in the environment we're in this year.
Can I make a proposal?
Fred?
Well, can we get that list in Mr. Beaver so that he can give us his input-
Yep.
-before we hit the prioritization of the list?
But when's your deadline?
Well, the deadline for the packet for the delegation meeting is Friday.
Friday.
But, the lobbyist has already indicated that she's already got an understanding with Representative Caldwell's office, that under the circumstances, we will not have the usual backup, that we can add backup at a later date, as soon as we get it together.
Well, yeah, if we get it to him tomorrow morning, or tonight-
Yep.
-probably, maybe we can get some comments from him by the end of the day tomorrow.
Well, and, well, I don't know. I would feel more comfortable if we were going to do that, that we get the information together for you, you're meeting weekly. So we will be back together again on October 11th. So we can do it then.
Carl, do you think they're gonna want, I mean, the dollar amount?
I think they will, but, but we'll, we'll do the best we can and ballpark it if we, if we have to.
Can I ask a question about Pine Lake, if Matt or whatever? I mean, that was in last year, that is, what do you think about that as a stormwater project as opposed to a, in addition to a retention project?
Matt Feeny, Public Works Director, for the record, I, we do have a number, a guesstimate number for Pine Lake, which I think is 900,000.
Yeah, it's nine, it's already number four.
Yeah, no, my question was the characterization of it, though.
It's, um-
As a stormwater versus a, last year was much more of a retention, a quality. Thank you.
It, it really is a hybrid project, and it has some components that will help some folks, at least marginally, with, with some of the sheet flow flooding that we've, we've seen across Kent Roads. And that's Lake Shalimar in particular, that neighborhood. So the containment berms that are designed into that project will help with that. So in that sense, I think it would help in terms of what we've currently experienced. It still is a rehydration, which is kind of a restoration type project.
Right.
And because the water's being held on the landscape, a water quality piece, which meets our TMDL requirement. So the, the main component of it that would help with, you know, what we've currently experienced, would probably be, be a benefit for that neighborhood, which is the containment berm. So it's, it's very hard to characterize it as in any one of those three categories.
It would just seem to me, since we had it in last year, it's got some tenure on it. And if it's also a stormwater project, I mean, it obviously should be a candidate for us to think about having up there, I think.
I would-
Yeah, and that's what I mean, it's on, it's already on the-
Already on there.
On number four on the first page, so.
Right.
I don't know why it's on the second page too, because these seem like they're different than what's on the first page, on the priority.
I would propose, though, that it, its substance be rewritten a little bit to emphasize that it would support flooding reduction.
Assuming it does.
Assuming it does.
That's, that's a big deal this year.
Yes.
So is your notion, when are we going to meet again, Wednesday?
Wednesday, 11th. So I'm thinking, well, a couple of things. Number one, if the councils, if, if you want to do, want us to do a rewrite, we could do a rewrite on Pine Lake Reserve. I don't know what you want to do with the quadrant plan, but again, that's been up there a couple of times now. So, well, maybe at least once, right?
Yeah, once.
So that could be an item that goes in, and then we could put an attachment to that backup material indicating that we are working on additional flood reduction, flood mitigation projects, which we will bring forward to the legislature as soon as council reviews it and approves it. We could do that as well.
I'd rather move some other flood project up along with Pine Lake, in my own view, and have quadrant be number three, because we still want it to gain traction for the next year. But we need another project. That's what you're suggesting here.
And I will tell you that I'm not necessarily saying you should only submit one.
Well, how, but what about?
I would think multiple ones.
Oh, I got you.
All right. Because again, let's remember, we, we are one of the three worst-hit in this state. So I think we ought to take the opportunity.
And on the quadrant one, I know based at the end, when we still were fighting to get a deal, Senator Pasadena submitted on her own, she broke it down, and so much money towards design, another chunk of money for land acquisition. I think if we scale it down more realistic, which kind of fits in with Council Duit's idea, that we can still get a design, which we have to do, as you know from something recently, but we don't have to build it as fast as we were going to.
I'd rather get Carol Green's suggestion on that, because there is a gamesmanship, I hate to say it, in this. And, you know, the smaller number you have, you, you don't normally get what you ask for. So I'd rather have her view, I'd, I'd like to have her view on whether or not to leave the bigger number in, and then we can get a smaller number.
Then I, yeah, and I think, I like the idea of, let's say, using our political friendship with something that we need immediately, like the flooding issue.
I think we should have a strong flooding mitigation project here. I mean, a specific one, rather than, do you think, Carl, do you think it would be better to just say a general term? I think if we could come up with something that was specific, it would be better.
Well, I think as specific as you can be, because obviously, the elected people have to face their constituents.
Right.
And what are you, what are you doling this money out for?
But aren't you suggesting, Fred or Carl, that you run that through Jim Beaver?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And then come back with a suggestion for a specific project in addition to Pine Lake, maybe two.
Or multiple.
Yeah, like you said, multiple. Next, for next Wednesday's meeting.
Okay, that's fine. So, so submit, submit nothing right now, with the goal of October 11th, we're going to have a list that we feel comfortable in sending forward to the legislature.
Unless they, unless Carol thinks it's important to put something, and then you just put a placeholder in, this water project. But that's up to her.
No, she's okay. We've already talked about that, and it can go either way with her. She's already arranged for it to go with no backup right now.
Okay.
Okay?
Exactly with me.
And I would prefer choosing a project that was more global than something that was too specific, you know, more global, because that would affect the entire city.
Right.
You know, like the bottling or something like that, or the, or the, you know, the material to retain water, that kind of thing, that would affect the larger area. Land acquisition for more retention. I think that would affect a larger area.
Okay. And we'll get with Mr. Beaver right away.
Great.
On this.
And Fred, you'll be in those conversations, right?
Pardon?
You'll be in those conversations?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. I have enough direction. Thank you. And then I think you wanted to make an announcement?
Yes, we were contacted by Lee County today with representatives from the National Flood Insurance Program Headquarters Task Force. They will be doing a tour of all of Florida, starting in St. John's County, making their way through with stops in every jurisdiction through Monroe County. They would like to host, and they will be hosting, a NFIP National Flood Insurance Program Task Force Workshop for floodplain administrators, building officials, insurance companies, anyone who would provide support services to folks needing additional resources for their flood insurance program. That's going to be October 12th. It's going to be 2:00 to 4:00 PM here at City Hall. We will also be allowing our conference room to be used for private referral meetings, so they can provide one-on-one service for folks. And this will be the stop for both servicing Lee and Collier County.
What was the time again on that day?
Two to four on October 12th. They'll be in the city council chambers, but they'll also be utilizing our conference room for one-on-one meetings as people are, as these professionals need assistance. And this is again for those professionals providing those assistance, the insurance companies and such.
Okay, thanks, Arlene. And then I just have one more item, and that is kind of a brief storm update on what we've done since the last time we met. Obviously, we completed the flooding map. We obviously need to take another hard look at Cedar Creek, and we'll be doing that. We also did water testing, as requested by council. We received those results back. And out of 11 different tests, nine of them failed. So we've already talked to the health department. They indicated that once the area dries up, that, you know, things are relatively safe that way as far as bacteria goes. But they did indicate that they, people need to be very careful when they're out there working, to make sure that they're covered. If they get a scratch, please watch themselves, you know, get, get themselves washed and, and antibiotics put on there. So we did, to that, to that notion, we did talk to the health department about the possibility of doing some type of health seminar, which was suggested at the last meeting. And they're willing to do that. So we'll be working to put something like that together, where they can actually come down and talk to folks about, in this stage of the, of the event, in recovery, what do you need to be watching for? How do you take care of yourself and, and stay healthy and through all of that?
Carl, we informed the areas where this report had, do they, are they aware of the fact that the, the water quality failed?
No, we did not, we did not inform them.
Should we be doing that?
Well, we could, but again, if they're dry, the, you know, the, the bacteria is gone, according to the health department.
So this is not a, this was a former problem, but it's probably not.
But not a current one. Unless they have water, we could, you know, watch, watch for that.
Well, we ought to be telling. If they have water, we ought to be telling them.
Yes.
If there's water, I think we should, we should distribute that information.
Carl, did the results come as a surprise to you?
No.
I think so.
Nope. Actually, I was surprised when two passed. Probably shouldn't have said that.
Fred?
We have significant water still standing. The, I mean, the IBE people were just in here. They, they're claiming they got a couple foot of water in places. Lake Shalimar, I know, has got water.
What are you going to tell them?
Right.
I think Pine Crest.
He's going to, he's going to tell them.
We'll tell them. If they have water, we'll tell them. Okay.
Great.
And it's not a secret. I mean, it's public information, but yeah.
On that damage map that we have, I, I think also we've got some areas where there was water in homes, and we need to look into that. I mentioned that to Carl before the meeting, but I think, I think there's a couple areas where there was definitely water in trailers in particular, or modular homes and, and all that. In fact, I bet my ranch on it.
Okay. So we've already talked about, and then we, then we were asked to do, make the city more visible, city employees more visible out there in the field. So what we did, and I'm just going to run through some photos real quick, we set up information tents. We rotated the tents with city employees in them amongst various hard-impacted neighborhoods. Since last week, we've done that every day. We put up big signs. We had the tents. We had water. We had cleaning kits, which are the items on the right-hand side there, that we handed out to people. We had a city vehicle with a logo on it, with lights flashing next to the tents. We also had a separate employee in a vehicle, city vehicle, with lights flashing, driving up and down the streets, looking for people, handing out water, handing out food. I think last Friday, Chris handed out pizza, right? Pizza, okay. That was, you were popular that day, right? Okay. So we also started a new service, and we started this in Citrus Park, right, Chris? Citrus Park. That's the, that's both of these photos, and that's mobile permitting. So they could actually apply for their permits at their own location. So this is actually in the Citrus Park facility, and we've got our own employees there. That's our building official, Pete Haggas, in the green shirt. This is something you've heard about, you haven't seen probably, but this is the coordination of the volunteers meeting, okay? So Lions Club, Rotary, Interfaith groups, we had folks from Samaritan's Purse. The person leading that group next to me there was from Canada. So we just had, and of course, the Benita Assistance Office. This is some of the, the crews working to clean up. These are, this is the large specialized contractor that is picking up a number of different items there. Now, there was talk, there was talk about a tree in the, in the river. That tree was removed early, early last week. That tree's been gone since then. This is the piece of equipment that went into the Wonder Gardens to get to the river, to get to that tree. It was a mahogany tree, by the way. And this is our pride and joy for the week, and that is that there was a significant, it is Luke. There was a significant washout of the road, to the point where it was actually threatening the home on the right-hand side of the picture. And so we went in, that we closed the street, number one, but then we opened it back up, and we went in and did emergency repairs on that, including riprap. Those are actually temporary repairs. We're going to have to go back in with something a little bit more permanent in the future. And I think that might be it. So, and then the last thing was, we needed to get more involved in housing. And I'll just tell you that we've already had preliminary discussions with Terry Lemain with regards to the process, with regards to hotel housing, which is a difficult thing. We've also had follow-up discussions with Habitat as well, just as a starting discussion. So housing is a, is going to be an ongoing, difficult issue. So I think that wraps up my report for storm, and unless council, any questions, that's all for the city manager's report.
I just want to say, I, I, I just want to say, Carl, the people that I know in Citrus Park are very happy about that mobile permitting.
Good. Thank you. Counsel, Mike?
Also, I'm not sure she was referencing the tree that we had removed. I haven't seen it, but I have heard that there's some other trees that are further up the river.
Okay.
That would be closer to IBE, so.
Well, there's, there's, there's obviously a number of items in the river we wish weren't there, and that might be restricting some flow. And, you know, we continue to look at that, absolutely.
One thing about the map, thank you for doing it, in Citrus Park, it shows the entire southern part not flooded in the streets, and it shows no flooding in any structure there. And I'm kind of scratching my head about that. I mean, there've been TV reports actually before the hurricane showing flooding in homes there. So.
Chris, why don't you come up?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the southern part of Citrus Park, that would be the entrance to?
Yes.
Oh, that was flooded, because I was there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It shows, what I'm saying, Steve, it shows it not flooded.
Yeah, well, it was, believe me. That affected several cars that got inundated with water.
Those, yeah, those streets were flooded.
So why do we have, just, obviously, the question is, why does it show it is not flooded?
We took a, a section of in-person, walking the streets, going through, and then also Google Earth came out with some additional aerials four days after the storm. We tried to do a little flood forensics in those areas we didn't get to initially.
Right.
So it's a combination of Google Maps and our personal observations.
Did you also look at our drone pictures?
But they're not accurate.
Yes. Yeah, we did look at some of the drone pictures as well.
But I'm saying, but these are not, this is not an accurate map.
Correct. We can correct.
I think that's, yeah, I think absolutely.
Sure.
Definitely.
Of course.
Okay.
And Cedar Creek needs added to it.
We mentioned that.
Yeah, right.
So the other question I have, is there any particular reason why I had asked for an indication of the number of houses that had flooding in them a while ago? Is there any particular reason why we're not getting that information? Or is that available, or?
It's available. I believe there are 3,600 homes that you looked at.
3,600 that we personally observed.
Right.
And I, out of the spreadsheet, I don't have the tally of the numbers that got into the structures.
Right. We can, we can give you that number. It's just basically address by address, and it's either a yes or a no in terms of flooding into the structure.
Right.
So we can give you a number.
A number.
Yeah, we can do that.
I just think it's appropriate, considering it's a massive flood, it's been in all the newspapers, et cetera, that we have an indication of what the extent of the flooding is.
Well, I think it also helps us get grants and things to show how bad flooding is, too.
Great. An, an accurate number and an accurate map, that'll be fantastic.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, counsel, anything else?
I, I've got a.
Okay, yeah, why don't we go around the horn here for mayor and council member reports?
You want me to, you want to start here?
Yeah, kick us off.
Okay. Well, one of them is, and I know we all know how horrific this was, but the shooting in Las Vegas, there is a fund, and I'll get, I'll send council an email address and all that, where if any of us want to contribute. I think we ought to, we ought to seriously consider doing something, because that's a, that's kind of horrific. It's horrific, different than a flood, but it's pretty horrific. Second thing that I wanted to bring up, and I think we ought to come to the meeting next week with ideas for what I called the postmortem, which is what things have we really do great, what things could we do a lot better? And I, I think we all got a little list on that. Another, another area that I have down here is that, oh, yeah. I heard a proposal, I think from the chairman of the fire district, that we should consider in Riverside Park, having some kind of a appreciation for the volunteers that pitched in in the recovery, as well as any of the FPL people that are still around, whoever, any of these people that are around. The longer we wait to do it, if we're going to do it, the more likely most of them will be gone. Now, may not be a good idea, but it sounded like it was a good idea at the time. So you might want to think about that.
Talking about, talking about volunteers, volunteers.
All the volunteers that worked, yeah, absolutely, because they, they were working for nothing. Now, the last thing I want to bring up, and I, I want to, I want to do a little fine tuning on something that we did probably about a month or so ago, but I think we ought to change what we agreed to on city council being able to talk with special counsel. I think that, especially in the situation we're in, and we've got a bunch of lawsuits, and we have things that might be lawsuits, I think that we should loosen that up to where a, any city council person can call that special counsel, as long as with a question, and it's not going to involve some kind of a work effort, a study, something that's going to come back that's going to cost a lot of money. And I, and I, I think we could just say, let's try it, see if we have a problem. And if we do, we can address it, but I think it would be better, and that, that's my observation, and, and I'm the one that brought it up. So I'm, I'm, I'm accepting responsibilities for any negative things that may have resulted.
So you, you want to rescind on that?
I want to, I kind of want to just, let's see, why don't we lighten it up a little bit and see if it doesn't work, as long as we don't end up having a lot of work being done that we don't know about, because that would mean we run up a big bill. So that's my proposal.
Fair enough.
Does anybody object?
Anything else? I mean, any discussion on that?
Does anybody object to it?
No.
No objections.
Okay.
Fred, any other items?
I'm done.
Mikey?
I'm good.
Good. Peter?
Just two things quickly. One is really second to what Fred there said. We had a presentation today, a great thing by the American Legion Fellow. We had one a week or two ago. We could have 500 of those here. And, you know, the citizens really are the real heroes of everything we've had here. I had a guy call me the other day. They live in Fair winds. He said, Pete, he says, I have two extra bedrooms in my house. If there's anyone that I could put up, let me know. So I gave him Terry's phone number. And that's multiplied throughout this city. So, you know, we don't see them here. We don't get a chance to thank them here, except the ones who show up. But I think it's real important to understand, we could have presentations day in and day out, and, and that's a blessing in this town. The other thing I had is, and it, it shows on this map too. The other thing I had is, and it shows on this map, too, we're obviously, hopefully, we're out of the woods, but we're still in hurricane. We're still in tropical storm season. We're gonna be in there for at least another month. Remember, Sandy happened after the hurricane season. And Carl and I have been back and forth on one thing, but I think on that Dean Street area on the west side of Imperial, and I'm also looking, although frankly, I came to say I haven't been over there, to Morgan, I notice north, if there are particular spots where a quick fix as an emergency can be put in place, so it's not like, you know, there's 1,000 feet, there may be 25 feet, I just want to make sure that, God forbid, we get 10 inches of rain, so to speak, sometime in the next week or two, we're in a position to, on an emergency basis, get in and plug some small gaps. So just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Peter. Steve, do we have a meeting tomorrow at 9 o'clock?
Yeah, I have to react.
Okay, just one. That's it.
Amy?
I just want to say that I really feel that I'm privileged to be a councilperson in Benita Springs, because this is a city that has come together in such a remarkable way. And I, this week, I took a tour of places that I couldn't get to a week ago because my car didn't get over the water, and we are dealing with some remarkable things here. But what's most remarkable is everybody that's pitched in and tried to do the best we can to improve the situation for our citizens. We still have a long way to go, and I just want everyone to know how much I appreciate it, and that I will, as a councilperson, will support the effort to get through this and to return our wonderful city to the way we had just a few weeks ago. Thank you for all the effort, every single person here, and I, as I say, I feel privileged to be representing this community, and thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, and I'll just echo that. You know, this, this is a horrific event, but it brings out the best in, I say everybody, 99.9% of everybody, it brings out the best in, and thank you for everything that we've done to this point. Thank you for everything we're going to do. A lot of this is kind of reiteration, but I just, hats off to, you know, Governor Rick Scott for his boots on the ground, Congressman Rooney, Senator Pasadena, Representative Ray Rodriguez, County Commissioner Larry Keiker. I mean, the list goes on and on and on, and we've got so many, like, we've talked about it, short-term, short-term needs, short-term emergencies, long-term solutions, long-term, you know, initiatives. And I just could not be more proud of our team also, so I just want to, you know, thank you very, very much onward and upward. And, you know, the beat goes on, and nobody, I guess, knows that as well as me, I guess I can say. I can't say whether the other six know it as well, but being out there every day and talking to people and just kind of roaming around, try it sometime. Don't have an agenda, just drive around town. Go to the hard-hit areas, get out of your car, walk around, talk to people. I mean, I know we have been doing it, but I'm just telling you, it is amazing, the feedback that you get, and it is remarkable to hear the personal stories. So as much as you can, I would encourage you to continue doing that. And with that, we make a motion for the approval of the minutes we have for September 6th, September 20th, September 26th budget meetings.
So moved.
And a second?
A second.
Okay.
As corrected by John West.
As corrected. John didn't say it. He didn't say it, so take it out of there. Thank you very mu, roll call, please.
Councilman McLean?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilman McCumbus?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Okay, public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward at this time. It's last call.
John West, sorry to bother you again, but regarding Citrus Park, I was there this afternoon, and it, he said it was flooded there. All the streets were flooded, not the homes so much. I think there were a few homes that got flooded, but otherwise, it was the streets. But not only Citrus Park, the map shows that Dewey Street, which is kind of the street next to it, that was flooded, and the properties there were flooded. So was Tower Road. I went there on the 19th, and that was covered in water. Also, one street that never gets flooded was Stillwell Parkway in St. Carlos Park. The northern part of that had a foot of water on it during, just after the storm. And so I caution a bit what's, you know, the Spring Creek thing, be careful about flooding in St. Carlos Park estates. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Okay, seeing, up, um... Well, good evening, Meg.
With a record, Meg Jacobson, a San Remo resident in Benita Springs. I came here because I wanted to support Fred's proposal, and then he passed it, and I thought, well, there's no reason am I wasting your time to tell you that I support it, but I do support it, and I want to tell you how much I support all of you. I was so lucky. I was out of the country when that storm hit, but I sure came home to see what you were up against, and I can see from your faces how tired you are and how hard you've worked. And as a citizen of this city, I want to tell you how much I appreciate you and the staff and all that you've accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you very much. Other members of the public? Seeing none, motion to adjourn? So moved. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.